Let's just call it.
Okay, we will give the attendees a moment to join in.
Hi, John.
Hey, how's everybody?
Good.
Good to see everybody.
Yeah, good to see you too, John.
When do you think we'll be back in person after September?
That that's what I'm hearing.
Okay. Actually easier this way, but you know.
You can request.
We were in person, we might need needed a police officer.
Okay, I think we are ready to begin.
Okay. Welcome everyone to the zoning board of adjustment for July eighth, twenty twenty one. Can everybody want to say the flag salute the flag? I pledge allegiance because everyone.
Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance. Flag. Everybody together.
But start all over again, right?
I pledge allegiance.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
One nation.
Liberty and justice.
Thank you. The zoning board of adjustment reserves the right to change the order of a published agenda. All changes to the agenda will be announced at the beginning of each meeting. It is the intent of this board at the discretion of the chairman to not to begin a new application. And and to adjourn the meeting by eleven P M. It is a further policy to the board that members of the public will be limited to five minutes when speaking on an application. When a person is representing a group of people, he or she may speak for ten minutes. For those of you in attendance in possession of a paging device or cellphone, kindly turn it off or put it on a vibrating mode. The sudden alerting tones of each device are disrupting to the proceedings as well as the recording equipment used by this board. Also, if you find it necessary necessary to converse with your applicant, professional attorney, please do so quietly privately. Thank you for your cooperation. This board is a quasi judicial board, therefore this meeting shall be conducted in a similar manner to judicial proceeding. The quorum appropriate for judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. And any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. This meeting is being held in compliance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act and has been duly noticed and published as required by law. So can we have a roll call?
Mister D'Addario.
Present.
Mister Leoncio.
Here.
Mister Willard. Mister Willard.
Here, unmuted, I'm sorry.
Mister Wheel. I don't see here. Mister Cohen.
Present.
Mister Panu.
Here.
Mister Cooper Smith.
Here. We have five resolutions to approve tonight. The first one I have is, I hope mostly you've got them, some came late today, so I hope you were able to recover them, but. So we can vote on them. The first one is application number Z C twenty twenty one dash zero zero four.
We get mail?
It's it's Matthew Kilane and Amanda Griffin. One dash zero zero four, can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mister Chairman, I vote to approve the resolution. Call it.
Willard second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call on the resolutions?
Yes.
Mister D'Addario.
Oh, yes, to the motion.
Actually, Mr. D'Addario is supposed to abstain, sorry.
Yes.
And Mister Cooper Smith would abstain, so Mister Leoncio.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Willard.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Cohen.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Panu.
Yes, to the motion.
We have.
Bob Mills here, but I didn't hear the motion.
I didn't, I'm not marked as absent on the on the twenty zero.
Mister Will joined, is that Mister Will? Six hundred.
Yeah, yeah, actually, we got the I got the Zoom invitation yesterday, I was looking all over my emails for today. So I am here and I'm logging in via camera now. Let's see, click here to join.
Sorry about that. Well, that's good, because now we got seven members now.
Can we count the votes?
So I'm not only on the record of vote, I'm not listed as absent.
I'm listening. I I think you were, I think that's a mistake on the resolution.
Okay.
To correct that.
Okay, then Cooper Smith abstains.
I'm sorry, so you are eligible to vote?
I thought I was.
No, he's not.
No.
But he's saying I wasn't there, so why abstain? The next one is application Z C twenty twenty one dash zero one two. It's Clifton and Alicia Ritchie, who have a motion to approve this application.
So moved, councilor, chairman.
Second, Anu.
Okay. A motion and a second, have a roll call again.
Mister D'Addario, please.
Do I abstain on this one?
Yes, you do.
Yes.
Okay.
Mister Leoncio.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Willard.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Wheel.
I'm just looking to see. Which one this is, what's the name on it?
That's that's Mister Clifton and Alicia Ritchie, five Windsor Drive.
This was the gentleman that had the unusually painted colored shed, recall.
Okay, yes, yes, the motion, I'm sorry.
Mister Cohen.
Yes, to the motion, Stella.
Mister Panu.
Yes, to the motion.
This is on the seventeenth, I'm listed as there, are you, are you saying?
You 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 were, you were not there.
Okay. Cooper Smith abstains, so the record is wrong, the record of vote should be changed then.
Yes.
Okay, the next application is Z C twenty twenty one dash zero one four. It's Anthony Bernero. Do we have a motion?
Don't move, Mister Chairman.
Okay. A second. We have a first and a second, then we have a roll call.
Mister Leoncio.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Willard.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Wheel. Mister Wheel.
You're on mute.
He's on mute.
Yeah, but I'm into the phone, can nobody hear me?
Now you're okay.
See you now.
You vote, yes. Thank you, Mister Cohen.
Yes, Stella, to the motion.
Mister Panu.
Yes, the motion.
Cooper Smith abstains. The next motion, resolution. Is application Z C twenty twenty one dash twenty. It's Joan Sarnice, three Dutch Town Road, Boree Lobby. Motion.
Don't move, Mister Chairman.
Second.
Second, Willard.
Roll call, we have a first and a second, a roll call.
Mister Leoncio.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Willard.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Wheel.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Cohen.
Yes, to the motion, Stella.
Mister Panu.
Yes, to the motion.
Two abstentions.
And both John and I abstained.
Yes.
Last resolution. This is application Z C twenty twenty dash zero two five. It's Leslie and Michael, Kara Squillup. Four hundred Lennox Avenue, do I have a motion?
Don't move, Wheel.
Thank you. Second.
Willard, second.
Okay, the first and the second, do I have a roll call?
Mister Leoncio.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Willard.
Yes, to the motion.
Mister Wheel.
Yes, the motion.
Mister Cohen.
Yes, Stella, to the motion.
Mister Panu.
Yes, the motion.
Two abstentions.
And two of sentences, okay. The minutes, we have two sets of minutes. May sixth. And what's the date on June, what's the other one, June seventeen?
June ten, May sixth, everybody is eligible to vote.
Are they both, is everybody vote eligible for both?
June ten, everyone except Mister Panu.
Okay.
We should do those individually then, Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes for May sixth.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second.
Okay, Manny Leoncio.
Manny seconds, have a roll call. We can do this by, we can do this.
You can do it by voice.
Just just a voice, but all those in favor on May sixth, please say aye.
Aye.
Mister Panu, you abstain?
Abstain, yeah.
Yes. June tenth. Twenty twenty one.
I'll make a motion that we approve that minutes, Wheel.
Okay, thanks, Bob. We have a second.
Second, Manny.
Is this the one Mister Panu couldn't vote, I made 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 mistake.
It was June tenth, right?
June tenth was Mister.
I apologize. And he should vote for the May sixth.
Yeah, I say yes to the May sixth.
Okay, okay, great, I apologize. So all those in favor.
Aye.
Staying to all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. There any any old business we have to discuss before we begin? So the main old businesses is the Board Use Route seventy three Development LLC, the Wawa. Mister Norman, or?
Yes.
Do we change what we said prior to, are we gonna have a full presentation and go, or we're gonna stick with what?
Yeah, I I mean, this is a continuation from a prior hearing. The applicant seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a Wawa convenience store fueling station. The the subject property is block two twenty, lot nine and sixteen. It's at the corner of Route seventy three and Crescent Road. It straddles the border of Borees and Eastham Townships. It comprises four point one six acres with three point four eight acres within Boree's Township. And the remaining zero point six acres in Eastham Township. Proposed improvements include a five thousand fifty one square foot Wawa retail building with separate fueling station with eight fuel dispensaries located under a seven thousand one hundred fifty square foot overhead canopy. Primary furniture and access are located in Eastham Township along State Highway Route seventy three. Ingress and egress to the site are from Route seventy three, which will be via right in, right out, out of the driveway. Secondary access and egress to the Wawa site will be provided via driveway along Crescent Road. And the Boree's portion of the track, it will restrict left turn egress. Roadway widening is proposed for both Route seventy three and Crescent in the driveway intersections. There is an existing one story dwelling locating adjacent adjacent to its Crescent Road furniture that will be demolished to facilitate construction of the driveway servicing facility. The applicant requires numerous variances and waivers, which we outlined in the original application, the primary one of which is the the use variance. From from section one fifty two point zero zero two for the access drive to the Wawa convenience store on lot sixteen, which is in the R R Rural Residential District. The R R district does not permit driveways or commercial development as a principal use. As a result, a D one variance is required. Applicant also needs various sign variances from section one fifty point fifteen G three E. Permit fuel pricing portion of a monument sign on the Crescent Road furniture to have an area of seventeen point six nine square feet. Where the gasoline price portion of a freestanding sign is prohibited from exceeding twelve square feet. From section one fifteen point fif- one fifty point fifteen H two A. Permit two facade signs where one is permitted permitted on each public street furniture. One nine point oh three square foot facade sign on the fueling canopy and a second sixty seven point seven square foot facade sign on the convenience store. Applicant requests to install a variance for to install two spanner signs, each with an area of thirty nine point three square feet on the canopy supports where the ordinance does not allow spanner signs. From section one fifteen point fifteen or one fifteen, one fifty point fifteen H two B. To construct a forty nine point eight seven square foot freestanding sign on the seventy three foot furniture on Crescent Road where freestanding signs is only permitted on a county road or municipal street furniture of at least a hundred feet. And to construct a forty nine point eight seven square foot freestanding sign on Crescent Road furniture for a maximum freestanding sign area of zero point five square feet per linear foot of building frontages permitted and no building frontage is proposed on Crescent Road from section one fifty two point one oh two A to permit an access drive from Crescent Road encroach into the required hundred foot rear yard landscape buffer required by ordinance section one fifty four point zero zero six. The last variance is one is from one fifty two point one oh two A, which requires a minimum of furniture of three hundred feet per convenience stores with gasoline fueling stations. Whereas the worries portion of the subject property has seventy three feet of furniture on Crescent Road. But it's noted that Eastham Township's portion has three hundred and twenty three feet of furniture on Route seventy three. And then applicant also requests waivers, design waivers from section one fifty four point zero zero six eight three, which prohibits drive aisles within required buffers. You were in section one fifty four point zero zero six eight eight requires a buffer of fifty feet from a residential user zone, whereas the access drive from Crescent Road encroaches to within approximately twenty eight a block two twenty lot seventeen and sidewalk on the opposite side of the drive encroaches to within four point four feet of lot fifteen. Both lots are in the R R zone and currently support a religious use and office use respectively. And last design waivers from section one fifty four point zero zero six D three, which requires landscaping consisting of six foot high evergreen trees installed to screen the perimeter of the trash enclosure walls. However, none are proposed and any other variances or waivers that may be required. And it's my understanding that the applicant has made some changes between now and the first meeting as relates to the access, the secondary access on Crescent Road, which I let the applicant present new testimony on that issue and we can proceed with hearing of the application.
Mister Prime, do you want to come forward and start the process?
And the applicant use raise hand feature. They're joining now. Let you unmute. And start video.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board, Tim Prime. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, Mister Norman gave you a comprehensive summary of the application. We were here before you on May sixth. We are back here July eighth originally, actually, we were scheduled in, scheduled for a public hearing and noticed in May of two thousand twenty, but we're delayed for, I guess, sixteen months now because of the pandemic. Mister Norman outlined the variances for you. I will remind the board that at the last hearing, we provided testimony on the variances from the engineer. There are six sign variances, they are, the variances are for Wawa standard sign package with a convenience store and fueling station. They're the two pylon signs with the gas pricing at each driveway. The sign above the the Goose logo and Wawa letters above the entrance and the spanner signs and canopy signs on the on the canopy. The matter, the application was adjourned till tonight to provide our planner and planning testimony in support of the application. Again, at the last hearing, we testified that the application meets all the bulk requirements and the zoning requirements for the M B zone for lot nine. All the front, all the yards, all the all the bulk requirements are met, it's a permitted use in the M B zone and lot nine, which is the bulk of the application. The use variance is required, and we're before this board only because we are utilizing the residential property next door to us for the driveway entrance on Crescent Road. That entrance is a right out only, there is no left out of that of that driveway, lefts in are permitted. And the county has approved that, I'm sorry, the county has not approved anything, we have met with the county, they will not act on the application until the board acts on it, but they did require a pass by, not a left hand turn lane, but a pass by a widening on Crescent Road to allow traffic to go around that left hand turn in. The since the last meeting, we met again with the county to discuss a widening the roadway on Crescent Road in front of the site. The relocate driveway was relocated slightly to make it a little closer to the church, a little further away from the Sobel office. And more importantly, provide enough room for a full sidewalk all along the front edge of the property from the TD Bank all the way down to the residential residential street. Our traffic engineer at the last meeting, Nick Verderisi, Dynamic Traffic, provided all the traffic testimony. He could not be here this evening, though his partner. Excuse me, Mister Taylor is here this evening, worked with Nick on the plan, he was going to, he's going to provide testimony on that revised plan that was reviewed with the county. Standards and we expect will be approved by the county if the if the application. With that, I will call Mister Taylor and qualify him because he did not testify before previously, but he's with the same firm and worked on the same plan. Justin, are you able to get in?
I will promote him now. And just for the record, we have a full contingent of seven board members this evening.
I'm very glad, I hope we can get.
One more, one more than we were thinking.
Good.
The meeting, so it's good.
Hopefully, we can get through the application this evening. Justin Taylor just showed up on the screen, Justin, are you unmuted?
I believe so, can you hear me?
Yes, Justin, because you did not testify last year, and could you just give the board a brief summary of your education and experience in the field of traffic and transportation engineering?
Sure, absolutely.
And be wait, before we do that, you'll raise your right hand, swear that's one you get today, it's the true self you got.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I own, I have a license to practice engineering in state New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Texas and Delaware. I hold a bachelor's of engineering from the University of Delaware. I've been practicing traffic planning for approximately the last twenty years, testified at hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, although I don't believe I've had the privilege to be before Voorhees and the zoning board here. I do testimony on on Wawa's, but all all other types of traffic planning in residential, retail, commercial developments.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to have Mister Taylor qualify to testify as an expert witness in traffic and transportation engineering.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you very much. Justin, I don't want to, I summarize quickly, we have a revised plan, if you want to share a screen and put up the rendering of the revised driveway plan, we'll be able to and testify about it for the board, please.
Yeah, give me one second. Once everybody can see my screen, please let me know.
Is there anybody can't see it? Okay, just go ahead, very well.
Perfect, as Mister Prime had discussed, we we had the capability of meeting with the county subsequent to the last zoning board meeting. We met with them on June eleventh of this month and discussed the 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 plan that was proposed at that time. As you'll remember, the driveway has been relocated approximately two hundred feet to the west from where it was approved as part of the previous application. And in talking to the county, we, you know, we discussed the benefits of that, of pulling the the proposed driveway further from the intersection of Crescent Road and Route seventy three. As part of moving of the driveway, there was also the elimination of the left turn out, so we are currently proposing a left turn in, a right turn in and a right turnout only, with left turns out of the driveway being prohibited. Through the discussion of the county, they had some some suggestions on how to improve what we were proposing. And the plan you see before you represents the the culmination of those discussions. Some of the things that they had looked for from us, as Mister Prime had mentioned, is widening Crescent Road, they were requesting that we provide a twenty foot half width on both sides to on our side to allow for left turning vehicles to be able to wait and to turn into the driveway, but for another vehicle to be able to bypass that left turning vehicle. And so what what this widening was done was to allow for that that half width to be accomplished. All of the widening will take place along the the northern side of Crescent Road. And we will still be maintaining the bike lanes in both direction with the additional width on the eastbound side, on the south side of the roadway to allow for that bypass. Now, I'm going to zoom one little bit on this, Tim, actually, you know, as I'm testing, you mark this.
Um, I think we need to mark this as A seven, we we had A eight six was the last exhibit I have. My records from the first being.
So A A seven is a concept rent entitled concept A rendering prepared by Dynamic Traffic with the date of, you know, seven, eight, twenty twenty one. And what this, what this plan is, is basically a colorization of the plan that we submitted to the board previously of the concept plan. We kind of colored the the roadway, we colored the proposed pavement and some of the landscaping that will that is proposed along the the new driveway. But what I'd like to do is zoom in a little bit, we what we did was we colored the new pavement in a darker gray color, as you can see, the proposed driveway is a darker gray color. What you don't see, and I'll zoom in for you a little bit, is the amount of widening and the gray that goes along it. And that's because in this area, there really was a fair amount of pavement already available for traveling by the public. The widening only is two to three feet along our frontage and our neighboring frontages, both to the east and the west to accomplish that bypass lane there, so it's not, it's not a lot of widening, but it is enough to allow the twenty foot half width that the county wanted to allow for the bypass lane. Another thing we discussed with them was increasing the proposed island to further channelize and prevent the left turns out. In comparison to the prior application, we've greatly increased the size of the island to to accomplish that desire of the county. And as I mentioned, we are maintaining the bike lanes that currently exist along the roadway in both directions. Another thing that was discussed is discussed with the county.
That otherwise known as a pork chop?
Yes, that's correct, yep, a pork chop island. An oversized pork chop.
Um, I I know lots about pork chops, so that's.
Um, the next thing that was discussed with the county was the introduction of a sidewalk through this area of the roadway. As you can see from the plan, what we are proposing is to initiate a sidewalk. TD Bank driveway to our east, carry it. Carry it along the roadway through our driveway and then continue it all the way to Birch to allow pedestrian connectivity between the residential neighborhood over there and not only the Wawa and the Wawa driveway, but also the TD Bank through here. And this was at the suggestion of the county and we feel that it is a, a good improvement to the roadway and the pedestrian connectivity in this area. Another aspect that was discussed and agreed to was the reduction of the speed limit through this area that the county is requesting, we are agreeing and will be signing it from, down from 45 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. To again, increase the safety of the traveling public and the, the other people and modes of transportation that will be traveling along the roadway. In this redesign, we also took a, took a hard look at the, the site distances that would be required for the driveway and the landscaping that is being proposed along our driveway to ensure that the landscaping and the other roadway conditions would not impede the necessary site distance from the driveway. And I, I can tell you that we meet the necessary stopping site distance for, set forth by the Ashdod design manual for the proposed driveway. Um, so based upon all that, that's really the, the improvements that were done. As Mr. Prime alluded to, this has been, it was discussed with the county, it was also resubmitted to the county and they have conceptually approved it. Obviously it would be to be fully designed, should this board act favorably and we would get to that point. But as a concept, they, they were in agreement with the radii, the layout of the driveway, the new pork chop, the widening and the sidewalk through here. Um, the other thing I just wanted to touch on a little bit was something that they brought up and that, you know, that we, in looking at the application, thought of the, the benefit of actually providing this driveway. Now, without this driveway, there would be sole access along Route 73. And any vehicle that would be looking to travel to and from the development would need to utilize Route 73 and the intersection of Crescent Road and Route 73. By providing this driveway, it allows the vehicles to, destined to and from the west to not even access the state highway at all. They will be able to make a left into the site and a right back out of the site and return to, to where they originated from. But further than that, if we were to eliminate this driveway, those, those vehicles would be traveling on Crescent Road. They wouldn't eliminate their travel on Crescent Road. They would just need to utilize the intersection. And I think that would really push more traffic through the intersection of Gibbs, Gibbs Town Crescent Road and the, the, the intersection that's in that location. So providing this, this interact or this connection point actually is going to alleviate the, some of the issues over there or, or minimize the impact to that intersection. And I would say that that's something that the NJ DOT also recommends. In, if there's possibility, they would prefer to see some access on the secondary roads to improve the efficiency of the state highway system and the, and the intersections along there. So I think that the, the provision of this driveway being is the fact that it meets the requirements of the county also adds a great benefit to the circulation and the operation of the site and will actually minimize its impact to, to the state highway and the surrounding intersections. Essentially, that's, that's what I have in my direct testimony. If there's any questions, we, I can, I'm here to answer them on the new layout of the driveway.
Justin, it's Tim, just to, before the board asks any questions, just to clarify, I want to make sure we're all talking about the same issue. The prior application, the driveway was shared with TD Bank was much closer to that third leg of the Gibbsboro Crescent Road that comes out very, very close to the intersection. So your testimony is that it will then, by having the Crescent Road driveway where we've located it, it would eliminate people making a right out of the site on 73, another right at the intersection and getting right in the middle of all that, all that traffic from, not only from 73 Crescent Road intersection, but also from the Gibbsboro Road, that third leg, but that comes out very close to intersection. Is that, I'm on my summarizing that? Okay.
Yep, that's, that's, that's correct. The, the volume that will be traveling that want destined to the west along Crescent are going to be in that area anyway. And so by pulling them, allowing them this driveway, they won't be passing that, that intersection.
Right, Mr. Verderisi testified and something like about most of this traffic is any, is pass by traffic anyway. It's traffic, it's all on the road, either on 73 or on Crescent Road. Any event, is that correct?
That, that's correct. This type of land use generates about three quarters of its traffic during the peak hours as pass by traffic or traffic that's already traveling the roadway that would stop into the while on their way to and from work, to and from, up at the kids at school, to and from their destinations. They're really already, already on the roadway. So it's, it's a very pass by oriented type of land use.
Thank you. I have no, nothing else, Mr. Norman, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions? For Mr. Taylor? Same none. Can you proceed, Mr. Prime?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I would like to introduce Paul Phillips, our professional planner, if we could let him into the, to the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Could the witness please raise hand? Should be joining now.
Here he comes, here he comes. Paul, you have to unmute too.
Yep, I still mute and ask to start video.
Hi, Paul.
Good evening, Tim.
Let's introduce you to the board. Have you sworn and give the board, I think you've testified before the planning board before. I don't know about this, but we'll give your credentials.
Well, Mr. Phillips, have you raised your right hand? You swore a testament and give tonight is true self you got.
I do.
Okay.
Paul, could you?
Yeah, so I'm the principal in the firm of Phillips Price. I've been practicing in New Jersey for approximately 40 years. Licensed professional planner in the state, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Hold a master's degree in urban planning from Hunter College. I've appeared and been accepted as a witness in probably 250 municipalities in the state and on numerous occasions in New Jersey Superior Court. My firm advises probably 25 to 30 municipalities and boards on zoning and land use. And I have previously appeared as an expert in Voorhees Township.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Mr. Phillips qualified to testify as an expert witness on planning and zoning, land use.
We accept his credentials. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Explain to the board what you did in contemplation of this hearing this evening, your testimony and provide that you were planning testimony for the application. Thanks.
Sure, so I did several things as part of my due diligence. I inspected the subject property. I did a survey of adjacent uses. I obviously reviewed the plans for development, consulted with the applicant and the project team. I reviewed the township zoning map and zoning ordinance. I reviewed the township's master plan documentation. And I also reviewed the board professionals' report on the application. So the proposal before the board is, the applicant is seeking to develop a Wawa convenience store with fuel sales on a property located at the intersection of Route 73 and Crescent Road. As you heard, the tract is primarily located in Voorhees. There's also a portion of the tract along the Route 73 frontage is within Evesham Township. The majority of the tract is located within the limits of the township's NMB, which is the major business district. That zone expressly permits convenience stores with gas sales. And the applicant essentially complies with the express standards for such use within that zone on the MB portion of the track. Meanwhile, the portion of the property that connects to Crescent Road is located within the RR residential zone. So that the location of the secondary driveway, which traverses the slot, triggers a D1 use variance. That is, the applicant is seeking to basically have a commercial driveway within a residential zone. And as has been indicated, there are a number of other C bulk variances, most of which are related to signage. In terms of the planning evaluation and proofs, starting with the D variance, I think this is really about establishing special reasons as to why this particular lot should be used for a commercial driveway, notwithstanding its zoning. And also why the property in question is particularly suited for the commercial driveway. First, I think it, it should be recognized that the secondary access is critical to the convenience store fuel sales operation, as it's all about being readily accessible to the public. And I can state that based on my own experience with very few exceptions and Wawa in particular, but also its competitors locate at signalized intersections with two means of access. And again, in this case, a highway location at the intersection of a county arterial roadway. However, in this instance, because the limits of the MB district do not extend for the same distance along Crescent Road as in the case of the larger of the lots, I'll call it the interior lots on the adjoining land. So the logical point for which to provide commercial access along Crescent Road is at a distance that is beyond the limits of the MB's own boundaries. And I would just expand on that. I know the board is familiar with the area, but on Crescent Road, only the TD Bank and the directly adjoining property to the TD Bank fall within, within the limits of the MB district. The office use, the property in question and the place of worship are all within the RR district. So essentially what you have is a proposal for a particular use that is clearly encouraged within the MB zone. And also what I characterize as a retail commercial use, which has been sort of one of the few economic drivers in what has been to say the least, a challenging a commercial environment due largely to e-commerce. And I say that even before the pandemic. And this economic driver that's before you really needs that secondary access. And I would point out along those lines that, and I think this is compelling, your master plan actually specifically cites signalized intersections as being appropriate along Route 73 for convenience stores with gas sales. So I think they also recognize basically why the applicant is seeking to locate at this location and have the two means of access. Secondly, from the standpoint of site suitability, the commercial driveway location actually abuts non-residential uses on either side despite the underlying RR zoning. So the commercial driveway would not sort of cut through or otherwise directly impact properties that are either used residentially or likely to be used residentially in the future. And I say the latter, given the fact that this, of the close proximity and influence of the Route 73 Crescent Road intersection. I think realistically speaking, I would characterize this side of Crescent Road extending from Route 73 to Birch Street as sort of transitional in nature and a clear residential land use pattern or presence sort of doesn't come into play until you reach Birch Street. So I think as a practical matter, notwithstanding the RR zoning, I do not see this particular section of Crescent Road having much long-term viability for single-family residential use, again, notwithstanding the zone. So I think for that reason, I think the subject lot is actually well-suited for a commercial driveway that would support the permitted use on the larger MB zone portion of the property. And then lastly, in terms of the positive criteria, I would just echo the comments of Mr. Taylor, that there are indeed benefits associated with providing secondary access from Crescent Road, and I won't belabor it. But from a planning standpoint, I would reiterate that the NJ DOT policy encourages alternative access where it's feasible in situations such as this. And also I think the driveway provides a means by which vehicles wanting to use Crescent Road have a direct means to do that in exiting the Wawa rather than have to get back onto the highway system, meaning Route 73, and then traverse what is obviously a busy three-way intersection. And then finally, on that point, and Mr. Taylor covered this, the driveway provides a direct means of access because left turns in are permitted for residents to the west to basically enter the Wawa without, without having to circuitously negotiate the state highway system to conveniently purchase goods and fuel. So having said that, I think the granting of the D variance would promote or advance three purposes of the statute. That would be purpose A, which would be to guide development in a manner that promotes the public welfare. Purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. And lastly, purpose H, which is to promote the free flow of traffic to reduce congestion. With regard to the negative criteria, I think that the test, as the board is aware, is whether the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or substantial impairment of the zone plan. And the key word here is substantial as just about any development application has impacts. And there will be impacts associated with this commercial driveway on adjacent properties and Crescent Road generally. So the question is whether those impacts rise to the level of being substantial in nature. And I don't believe that is the case here. And I say that again, primarily given of the fact that the driveway would be surrounded on either side by non-residential uses, an office building and a place of worship and not residential use, which again is the principal use that is advocated by your RR zone. But I also say it for the fact that Crescent Road would be accepting additional traffic from the Wawa with or without the driveway. It would just have to go through the intersection to get there if this driveway were not approved. With regard to the zone plan impacts, I would say that the granting of the variance would not otherwise compromise the integrity of sort of the, your larger RR district. So in other words, allowing the driveway at this location does not, in my opinion, rise to the level of creating substantial impacts on the zone plan. And obviously recognizing that by its very nature, any use variance is going to be inconsistent with the zone plan. And I, I make that proffer, obviously considering the largely non-residential context along this side of Crescent Road, again, from Route 73 down to Birch Street. I would only add in that regard that the township is in fact due for a master plan reexamination next year. It'll be 10 years since the 2012 reexamination. And presumably this area, which has had applications before this, would be a logical area for study in terms of any potential new master plan or zoning recommendations. Moving to the bulk variance relief, I think much of this was covered by the site engineer, but I would briefly, briefly address it for the, for the record. The minimum frontage requirement of 300 feet for this use in the MB zone. This is sort of a technical variance, even if required as all of the site frontage is within Evesham, again, along Route 73. And it's actually, I think, it's over 300 feet, I think it's 322 feet. So at the very least, I think the applicant is meeting the spirit of the ordinance. With regard to Crescent Road, while there's only 73 feet of frontage, the ordinance requirement is actually only for the MB zone. So technically, I'm not sure if a variance is required, but in any event, if it is, I think the relief is largely subsumed within the D variance for the same reasons that I've provided. There's a variance, there's an absolutely tiny triangular portion of the access drive that impinges on the 100-foot, 100-foot landscape buffer requirement in the MB zone. This encroachment is absolutely diminished. I think the applicant's clearly meeting the spirit of the ordinance. It's one little pinch point. And lastly, there's the sign variance relief. And I would concur that none of which, in my opinion, what's being sought is excessive or egregious. The signage is prototypical and actually consistent with what you would expect for the use. Uh, the signage is prototypical and actually consistent with what you would expect for the use. So for example, there are spanner signs. It's the ordinance doesn't contemplate. Spanner signs, uh, so technically the applicant is proposing. Uh, two such signs for the canopy supports, so relief is, uh, required. But again, this is proto. Typical signage. Uh, the ordinance, uh, allows freestanding signs on each of the roadways. But only if a hundred feet, if frontage is available. Obviously, the applicant has seventy-three feet. Of frontage on Crescent Road. But if you're inclined to support the driveway location as part of the use variance, then obviously. A sign would be in order for identification purposes along Crescent Road. Uh, similarly, there's no technically no building frontage proposed on Crescent Road. Uh, so a variance would be needed for the sign along this street frontage. And again, this is a variance. If you if you believe that the driveway is legitimate, then this variance would be sort of assumed. Within the, uh, D variance because you do need the, uh, identification sign. Uh, technically, there's a variance for the canopy. There's, I think, nine square feet of sign on the canopy. Uh, because only one facade sign is permitted per business, but obviously. The Wawa operation includes a store and a and a canopy. And then lastly, there's a relatively de minimis variance for the size of the gasoline pricing portion. Of the Crescent Road sign. I think it's seventeen point six-nine square feet where twelve feet is allowed. I look at this as being relatively minor, and, uh, I would also consider that the. Sign itself is less than total, uh, is less than fifty square feet. Uh, in area, I think all these variances can be granted based on C-two criteria and would advance the same. Purposes of zoning is under the D use variance. And then lastly, two design. Uh, waivers or exceptions. The ordinance requires, uh, evergreen plantings along the perimeter of the. Trash enclosure, which is behind the building here, but the applicant is. Providing rear buffer landscaping in the alternative, which will screen. The trash enclosure from the adjacent properties. And also technically, there's a fifty-foot, uh, buffer requirement for a commercial use to a residential use. Obviously, there's only seventy-three feet of width on the RR lot. Uh, that that cannot be met. So there's technically relief required to both Lot seventeen. Which is the place of worship and Lot fifteen, which is the office building. Uh, and again, this relief goes hand in hand with the D variance. I would add that the applicant is proposing landscaping and screening. On either side of that driveway to those adjacent non-residential properties in any event. So, uh, I think the waiver requests are all reasonable and they're within the spirit and intent of the specific, uh, ordinance provisions. And Mr. Prime, I think I've covered all of the relief that's being sought, but if I haven't, I'm sure you will ask me.
No, sir, you have, and I have no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman. If the board has any questions, we'll be happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions from the board? Is there anything else before I open to the public? I mean, are there any other witnesses that come forward?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our, um, our application presentation. Uh, we reserve the right obviously to offer rebuttal testimony if necessary to answer any questions from the public, but that does constitute our application. Uh, presentation. Thank you.
I'm gonna open it to the public. Um, I just want the people that come forward. Uh, it's the option of the chairman to to grant the time. Uh, normally it's five minutes, but due to this application, the length of it. Uh, I'm gonna allow the people to come forward ten minutes. Uh, to speak, and I will cut you off after that. I I don't know how many people, I know it's a large crowd in the audience. I don't know how many people are gonna speak. But I want to give the opportunity to everyone have a chance to 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 say what they think. Though saying that, uh, can we have someone raise their hand and come forward and be sworn in?
One moment, I'll begin allowing the first person. Sharon Saxton will be joining. Asking to unmute, asking to start video. Sharon, could you unmute, please? There we go.
Thank you. Hi.
Okay, wait, uh, just before before you you start, well, before I even swear in. I I just realized I was on mute, but for the just for the public certification, if you had testified previously at the last meeting. Uh, we already have your testimony as part of the record, and quite frankly. It would be redundant. It's already on the record and. And if the comments were made, just say that you heard the testimony from the first meeting and. You don't have to, uh, repeat it, uh, ad nauseam and and, hell, we're trying to run an efficient meeting. So everyone who wants to speak can speak. And I believe there may be one, uh, applicant, or there may be one objector who is professionals. Who may testify and and we're gonna ask them to go last. And have their testimony limited to to ten minutes each. Uh, if possible, so that, uh, we run an efficient meeting, uh, while it's still time. At the same time, allow due process. Yeah, and, uh, there was also information about a petition that was filed. Uh, this board cannot consider petitions as part of the record. Because some of the sign signatories of the petition are not here tonight. Uh, you're well, uh, you're free to provide whatever in the petition is evidence. At the hearing in your own testimony, but we cannot, uh, introduce that as evidence because there's no. No ability to cross-examine everyone who signed the petition. So. That being said, Sharon, if you raise your right hand, you swear to the testimony you give tonight is true. So if you got.
I do. Uh, three brief little.
Tell us your address.
Sure, Eighth Fairway Drive.
Eighth Fairway Drive. Okay, go ahead.
Three little things, but, uh, hopefully it will make a little bit of an impact on two of them. Um, I'm sure everybody knows that that intersection is horrible and many. Accidents, including my daughter had a bad accident there. I know someone else. Who is in an accident there and almost died from that accident. Um, I know that a lot of people actually cut through and around the bank. To try to avoid that intersection. I want to know what's to stop, or if you have any. Theories about people cutting through the parking area just to get through and cause more. Uh, bottlenecking onto Crescent Road just to avoid the lights. And and potentially causing more accidents. I understand what you're just talking about with your pork chop. And coming up and around, but I know a lot of people. Will look to avoid that light, come up and around Crescent, cut through, and then even though you're saying you can't make that left, they still will.
That would really be up to the police to enforce that. We have no enforcement body. This is not an enforcement body, so it would be up to the police. Maybe we would request that the more activity by the police to be in that area. Uh, and and I think if the residents got together or more vocal about it, I thi- think, uh, I think they would, uh, be out there more. To stop it. We can't do anything about the, uh, uh, people making illegal U-turns or cutting through the parking lot. Uh, that's not, that's not in our purview.
And I understand that, but I don't think that you're going to be helping the situation by having yet another avenue to avoid. That light and causing, uh, potential more dangerous accidents in that intersection. I don't thi- I think adding fuel to the fire, not necessarily fixing a, uh, a bit, an already bad situation. So I would just wanted to throw that out there. I think that's something that should be addressed with the board. Uh, from somebody who lives around there, who's experienced a few accidents. Um, personally, within my family and friends, I think it's a very dangerous spot, and I'm sure that. Uh, whoever assigned that or or assessed that whole situation would see several times. People are coming out of Crescent Gibbsboro Road and they're coming through Crescent, and everyone's inching along to get through. I don't think putting something big and massive on the other side is really gonna help that situation. I think it's gonna compound it. That's number one. Number two, um, I had heard, and I don't know if this is true or not, maybe somebody could, um. Teach me a little bit, but is there any truth to an eminent domain that you'll be taking about twenty feet away from all the homes on Birch? To accomplish this, and you're taking away.
Sharon, that's not true. No, there's no right-of-way taking or eminent domain required for the application.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then just one other brief thing, and this is silly, but this is just a pet peeve of mine for Justin. Um, if you're going to stand up and talk about one of your projects, call it what it is, and it's Gibbsboro Road, not Gibbs Town Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Prime, do you want to wait to the end to to, uh, to voice your opinion against each of those?
I'm taking notes on the questions, Mr. Chairman. If we can answer them right away, each speaker, we will, but I'm also taking notes, so I.
It would make more be more efficient if we continued on.
Sure.
Let me answer them at the end.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Sharon Saxton. Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay, the the next person, please come forward.
Yep, one moment.
I guess. Yeah, uh, I guess I'm on.
Yes, Mr. Identify yourself at the record.
Uh, George Zugabe.
And your address, please.
Four oh seven Crescent Road.
Four oh seven Crescent Road. Mr. Zugabe, did, did you testify at the last hearing?
No, this is, uh, new to me.
You're new? Okay, if you raise your hand, swear a testimony you give tonight is the true self you got.
I do.
Okay, okay.
Um, my concern is about safety. I live on the opposite side of Birch. Uh, my property has already been used as a jug handle. People come in, cut through, dinner on, come back on Birch and go back. Is that on my hand? Oh, um. My fear is if that it's only a right turn only coming out on Crescent. That's gonna gonna make the matter even worse. I have kids that plays on Birch. They play basketball. I've already had a problem with people speeding through. They speed through my property, they speed on Birch. If that were to happen, they're gonna come. Make a U-turn right on my property, turn back out to go back on seventy-three. So that's, to me, it's very dangerous, and I mean, I'm not liking this, so. So I don't know what, you know, what could be done to avoid this situation, because you're saying it's only a right turn only when you come out. On, uh, Crescent Road. So what needs to be done to resolve that situation?
Hey, well, well, I I just for the public certification. Um, th- this board has to presume that that people will follow traffic laws. Uh, because if we assumed everyone was going to break the law. It would be very difficult to approve anything because anyone can. Can see situations of, uh, not following the rules. So I mean, that's, that's one of the. The principles the board's gonna have to work with.
Yeah, I know. I mean, if I if I didn't think that's an issue, I wouldn't be even here speaking. I wouldn't even came up and. Voice my opinion about the situation. They don't only cut through, they speed through my property. And like I said, that's been an issue ever since I moved in here. I think this is gonna make it even, you know, it's gonna make the matter even worse. So I don't know if you guys are aware of the situation or. Know what's going on, but I live on the corner of Crescent and Birch, and I see what on a daily basis. I have a camera that records. And it's on any given day on Birch along between twenty to thirty cars that make a jug handle going. In my property and go back out. And with this coming, I'm not sure how many cars it's gonna, and with my kids being out on this road. And playing basketball, I for the safety of my kids and other kids, the neighbors' kids that all they gather right on the corner and play. I mean, and that's, that's kind of scary. So.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. We'll go, we'll get everybody's testimony and then then we'll have, uh, Mr. Prime come back on and answer. Does any one of the board have any questions of this of this witness? Saying none, I'll ask for the next witness to come forward and be sworn in.
One moment. The attendee's name is Linda, listed as Linda. She needs to unmute and start her video, please. I'll send Linda back. And then we'll come back to her. If she's having technical difficulty.
We have any idea how many people are gonna come forward?
I have four more with their hands raised.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Give me one moment.
I just want to make sure we get everybody in, that's all.
Yep. Just unmute, start video. Next attendee is joining. And he's here.
Yes.
Horvitz.
Okay, sir, can you identify yourself with the record, please?
Uh, yes, uh, my name is Louis Horvitz. I live at Sixth Birch Street. And, uh, I did testify at the last meeting, but I'm gonna focus more on, uh, follow-up questions regarding the. Uh, depositions that were given today.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you repeat your Louis, what's your last name?
Uh, Louis Horvitz. I live at Sixth Birch Street. Um, I'm very happy to to testify here, and I'm going to.
Okay, you're still under oath, so we don't need to swear you in again, so.
Very good.
Proceed, but we have all your testimony from the first hearing, so.
Fantastic, good, good. So, um, the the first question I had was was to, uh, Mr. Taylor. Um, he mentioned how there would be potential benefits, uh, for. From Crescent Gibbsboro Road, just wondering, uh, what data he had to support that, or was that just? Based upon conjecture or where where did he derive the benefit, um, from Crescent Gibbsboro Road with this project?
We'll answer them at the end per the chairman's instructions, Mr. Horvitz. Thanks.
Okay, um, in terms of the, uh, effects on the virtue of Voorhees. Uh, hospital, will the access from Crescent increase the capacity of Crescent and. Crescent Gibbsboro and then decrease the emergency response to the hospital from Crescent and Crescent Gibbsboro? Do you want to answer that later?
Your question's noted. We'll answer it at the end as the chairman.
Okay, very good. Uh, regarding the traffic counts on the, um, on the plan that was submitted on June twenty-second. I I don't see where any traffic counts were taken during the summer season or on a Friday. Uh, which would likely show a much higher traffic count. What I'd like, I'd like to see some comment on that.
We will, Mr. Mr. Vertarici addressed that at the last hearing, but we'll, we'll answer it again.
I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Paul Phillips, um, said that he believed that the. Second access is essential for the profitability of the of the Wawa. Um, just, just a comment, perhaps it's then just not a, not such a great place to put a Wawa if the second access. Is gonna jeopardize safety as well. Uh, just a comment, as far as the land use along Crescent Gibbsboro in the vicinity. Uh, saying that they're saying Paul Phillips said that it's primarily residential. I I don't think it's really an accurate representation of the land uses, because I think it's mostly residential. He's maybe saying that maybe in the future it won't be, but right now it's still residential. And having the site entrance off of Crescent Road for. And having the site entrance off of Crescent Road for emergency vehicles only will have the least impact for the residents. So I mean, if we were going to use that as an entrance or egress, emergency would be the only way that, way that would be, would, would, would address, dress the safety of the residents. And if you could comment on that as well. I have another question in terms of the left turns out of the Crescent Road driveway, which will be prohibited. When you look at page one, the last sentence of the traffic impact study that you said were, were, you know, and again, I'm just reiterating the fact that this, it, it truly acknowledges that, that, that due to the existing and proposed traffic that this turn maneuver is, is a most difficult and dangerous one. And that the site entrance of Crescent Road should only be used for emergency vehicles, as I mentioned earlier. If you could please address that when, when you get to the chance. And finally, I also noted on the site plan on the safety or the dynamic study that per direction by the Camden County was proposed to reduce the speed limit along the frontage to 35 miles per hour as part of the project. This also acknowledges that, that the negative impact to this project on the approach roadway of Crescent Road. And, and again, I think just, just reiterates the issues of safety when you have to change, change the, change the speed limit in these adjoining areas. These are the only questions I have. If you could help with addressing some or all of those at the end, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Horvitz.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone have any questions for this, this witness, anyone on the board? If not, thank you again for your testimony. Someone else want to come forward?
In the back, I'm gonna ask Linda to unmute.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Mr. Norman?
Yes, Linda, can you give us your full name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Linda Greenwood. My address is 11 Covington Lane, Voorhees.
Okay, did, did you speak at the last meeting?
I did not. I attended, but I did not speak.
Okay, if you can raise your A-hand, then do you swear the testimony you give tonight as the true self you got?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so my first and most important concern are the children that will be encouraged to walk or bicycle to the Wawa because they will have an exit and an entrance on Crescent Road. I know children, I have three children, I have seven grandchildren. I know the children will want to walk and bicycle to that Wawa. So that's my primary concern, that they will not be protected well enough for, from a partial sidewalk that does not even go down to the field, the baseball field. And they will encourage, they will be encouraged to go to that Wawa because of that exit and entrance on Crescent Road. Um, second is that there are four traffic lights between Cooper Road and Crescent Road. Now, I know myself that sometimes I take Brick Road, all right, to avoid traffic on 73 to get to some of those shopping areas on 73. It is through a residential area. I'm very aware of that. I, I do not go over 25 miles an hour, but I see a lot of cars zoom down Brick Road through a residential area at 45, sometimes 50 miles an hour. I can guarantee, almost guarantee that people who do not want to through four traffic lights to get to that Wawa point to cut through my community, the Beagle Club, because they will only have to wait at one traffic light. And that's the traffic light that's on Cooper. They will cut through my community, I can guarantee it, and there's already a problem with cars zooming through our development. So that's the second concern. Now, there is a super Wawa that is being constructed less than a mile from where this 1 on 73 in Crescent is going to be. So, you know, as far as people coming up Crescent Gibbsboro, they can just turn around and go to the one that is being constructed, constructed on 561 and Gibbsboro Road. But like I said, my primary concern is that there will, there is going to be accidents, children will be injured. I have no problem with Wawa putting the super Wawa on 73 and somehow managing the traffic on 73. They have to have, you know, a jug handle coming around for people that want to get on the other side to enter the Wawa, the super Wawa. I had a real problem, okay, with there being an exit and entrance on Crescent Road. So, um, you know, and I can pretty much guarantee there are going to be children that are going to be injured trying to get to that Wawa and people cutting through my neighborhood. So, and pretty much all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Is anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I want to, is it okay if I ask a couple of questions of the, the last witness? Because I just want a clarification. When she mentioned that there are four lights from Cooper to, to that intersection, I'm, I'm trying to count them. I don't count four. What are the lights?
There's Crescent, there's Dutch Town, there's William Feather, there's Signal Hill, and there's Cedar Hill.
Okay, you're on 73. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you there. Okay.
People are gonna want to avoid waiting at those traffic lights to get to that Wawa, and they're gonna use my community to cut through. And like I said, how many of us, how many of you on the planning board have used Brick Road to, to avoid, you know, waiting at that traffic light to get onto 73? I know I have. I'm very careful going through that community. It is a residential community, but I know most people are not. They, I see them, you know, they pass me going through that residential community on Brick Road. So.
Okay, and the, the next comment is just a comment. The, the super Wawa that's being built in Gibbsboro on 561, I would suggest is probably closer to three miles away than it is.
No, it's point nine, it's, it's point nine miles from my house. And I live in, I live right on Covington Lane, right at the entrance of Crescent Road and Covington Lane. If you look, if you Google it, it says point nine miles. So you can, I mean, I might, I could be wrong, I could be wrong, but I did, I did look it up on maps.
It's from your, it's from your house, Linda, not from this site. It's more than nine.
Oh, well, wait, yeah, I know, but from my house to the Wawa, I could walk there in like 10 minutes. So it's not that much farther. It's very, very close. Very close.
Okay.
So the, the, the reason that, that, you know, and Wawa is a good, you know, I'm not saying anything against Wawa. They do a lot for the community, but in this case, it is going to be detrimental to the community, to the children in this community. I do not want to see what I know is probably gonna happen, okay? And to put the egress and ingress right there on Crescent Road, it's to encourage uh, people from the community, you know, walking, bicycling to get people to go to that um, Wawa without having to go to 73 and then out, which would be much, much safer. Would not encourage pedestrian traffic, it would not encourage cycling. So, you know, but this will, this exit and entrance on Crescent Road, it will encourage the children to take their bicycles, to walk to that, that store to get snacks, to get beverages. And it will encourage people that do not want to wait through four traffic lights on 73 that want to get to that Wawa. Oh, wait, no, we're gonna go through the Beagle Club and we're gonna go enter that Wawa off of Crescent Road. I can guarantee you that's gonna happen, pretty much. So, yeah. That's my concern to children. That's my main concern.
Anyone else? Thank you, Linda, for your testimony.
Thank you.
The next person, please come forward.
One moment. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. One moment.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity this evening.
One moment, Mr. Norman.
I'll swear you in. Can you tell, give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, my first name is Sutain, last name is Prabhu, P R A B H U. And I live at 10, number 10 Birch Street.
Okay, so, so 10, did, did you testify at the last hearing?
No, I attended it, but I didn't testify, so yes, I should be.
Okay, all right, if you raise your A-hand, swear the testimony you give tonight as the true self you got. Yes?
Yes, I do. Sorry.
Okay, terrific. Thanks. Okay. Go ahead.
So, um, yes, Mr. Norman, you clarified in the beginning that there's a lot of people here, almost about 230 people that got together to write a petition and for reasons, as you mentioned, we can't sort of present it here. So do you mind with your permission, Mr. Chairman and the board members, if I share my screen and show the petition and just go through some of the things?
Well, we, 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 we can't, we can't introduce the petition into evidence, but you're, feel free. The contents of the petition, I'm, I'm sure you're well aware of it. You can provide your own personal observations on it. I assume you signed it and you, you can, you can get into the details of it without presenting it.
Well, this, there's five major sections in that, and each has a, as editorial as to why it's so important to have the zoning board literally reject this application. It starts with obviously what everybody has been saying since the last meeting, safety and accidents. So I'm not gonna harp over that because there's a lot of people who had comments on it, but I must say, if you were to live on Birch Street, when we get out every day, we have to look at traffic coming from the left. Then we have to look at traffic coming from the right. Then we have to look for bikers. And literally two times a day, you will find a kid going in the wrong direction in the bike lane that you almost end up hitting, almost. I have seen a truck hit a kid not too long ago. Okay, so everything that has been presented, nobody talks about these bike lanes. Nobody talks about the bike-a-thons that happen on holidays and weekends. And sometimes these bike-a-thons are a mile long. We can't get out. Okay, after this, you're gonna put more traffic because of this entrance and exit from the Wawa on Crescent, which is what we are debating here. So the safety issue is so important that I consider the board to consider as being the pivotal decision maker for this entrance, entrance and exit to the Crescent Road. So that was our first item. The second item was the conditions, the traffic conditions. Well, you know, since the, the Virtua Hospital has opened and then there is a Samaritan Center for Elderly, it's just gotten worse. Every year it just gets worse, gets worse. We end up living with it. We pay hefty taxes. And here you go, there's another thing coming in and we're gonna live with it? If, if you guys lived here, would you, would you have the conscience to allow this to happen? Seriously, I mean, this is, this is not done. This is gonna be a nightmare when it comes to traffic. All kinds of testimonies have been heard. Everybody has their view, but nobody lives here. We live here. And you must hear us. Number three was a bad location. What is a bad location? Since the last meeting, everybody is talking about a DOT minimum requirement of having a second entrance and exit. In case Route 73 gets blocked, you have a way for people to get in and get in and out based on safety. We are talking about safety of an entity that doesn't exist. We're talking about safety of hypothetical people because this entity doesn't exist. The Wawa doesn't exist. Has anybody talked about the safety of people that already live there that is jeopardized by all this traffic that use Birch Street as a way to take U-turns? Because somebody missed the turn or they wanted to word alike. And guess what this entrance and exit to Crescent is gonna do? It's gonna make it even worse. That was our fourth point. And the last point is, you know, there's something called a fiduciary responsibility. You all are respected members of this community. Okay, we have been here for 30 years in this township, 30 years, coming up to 32. Why did we move here? We moved here because it was a serene place. We are gonna cut all those trees down. We're gonna devastate that neighborhood. Three houses in here, which is four, six and eight, has shared their backyard with this proposed Wawa. Nobody mentions that. The noise, the pollution. And God only knows what happens when you have people who don't live here visit the Wawa. So you're jeopardizing the safety and the, the, what, what's the word? I mean, we live here in peace. You're gonna spoil all that. It's gonna be a disaster. Has anybody considered, do you mind if I share a screen that I took from Google, which shows Route 73 where the Coles is, to show you the property between the Wendy's and, and, and Coles, which is empty. It says for sale. And it has an entrance and exit you can put on Lafayette Avenue. Why aren't we considering that? There are no trees there. It's already demolished. A plan over there had failed 10 years ago. It's all flat. Is this something the board can recommend to these folks from Wawa? That's something they should use. It's already there.
We, we had to consider the application that's before us today. We can't, we can't force an applicant to go off-site. So we have to judge the application on the merits and what's in front of us.
Exactly my point. At the cost of the lives of people who live here. Anyway, I rest my case. That's what I wanted to say. I mean, you have to do what you have to do, but I'm telling you, it's a big mistake. It's a huge mistake. And we came here to Voorhees for a reason. And it's just getting worse to a point where people don't want to live in Voorhees anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone from the board want to approach this witness with questions? Saying none, I thank you for your testimony.
Sure.
Is there anyone else that wants to come forward? Is there anyone else that's raised their hand to come forward? If not, I'll.
Yes, I'm promoting them now, sorry.
Okay, sorry, okay. Difficult when you can't see.
Hey, your name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nita Prabhu.
Okay.
And I live on Birch Street, number 10.
Okay. You're Mr. Nita, do you swear?
Your husband just testified.
Testament?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's right. He was in his own room. I'm in another room.
She can have her opinions too.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Do, do, do you swear the testimony you give tonight as the true self you got?
I do, I do.
Okay.
Thank you for, thank you for giving me this chance. I'm gonna have my little one help me out here a little bit. I wanna share a screen with you and my 15-year-old is quickly gonna share the scene, the screen and show you something. If you don't mind, it'll take a few seconds. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I will, I will let you guys watch this and I will explain what this is if you can give me two minutes of your attention. Okay, so this was a video clip from my phone. Um on June fifteenth, when I was driving on Crescent, coming home, um I saw this gentleman on his bike. I usually don't record, that's not my style, I do not pull out my phone and start recording people or anything. But I was tempted to do that because I thought it will provide a good example of what people do for this meeting. And there's a reason why I did that. Um when you saw initially in that video, there was no bike lane. There was no bike lane, yet the gentleman was biking at full speed. And I thought, wait, and he was making me nervous, so I was going very slow. The rest of the 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 traffic also slowed down so that we don't hit him. And then you saw that he stopped at that light, there was a red, and he just took off. In the meanwhile, there was another kid that was on his, on on his bike. The car ahead of me thought, oh, it's green, maybe that's why the 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 person on the bike took off. No, it was a red, he just took off. Then the bike lane starts right after Centennial Boulevard, all the way to to where seventy-three is. And that's exactly was what Linda was trying to say, there's a lot of bikers, kids going towards those roads. There's also school lane, there are kids biking to school. This is a residential neighborhood. And now one of the homes is not residential anymore and you are making an additional exit onto Crescent. Crescent cannot take any more traffic, believe me. I live on Birch Street, I have been living in Voorhees for thirty years. Whenever I drove on the street, I never worried so much. Last fifteen, fourteen years, I am living on Birch Street. Every time I get, try to get on Crescent from Birch Street, these days I worry. I'm extremely scared, I have to look here and there, make sure I'm not gonna hit anyone. There's just too many roads there, there is Crescent Gibbsboro, there is people coming out of TD. The two lanes that come from seventy-three onto Crescent merge, become one. I go on these roads every day twice, three times, four times. These are my everyday roads and they are getting worse and worse. And I see accidents and I see ambulances, ambulances speeding by. Um whenever I take that turn from seventy-three onto Crescent, the two lanes, the two lanes become one. Some people are waiting to go to Crescent Gibbsboro, there's some people coming from the TD. And I slow down, it's forty-five is the limit. And I'm going at forty or forty-five, people are honking. Why I have to take that right turn immediately into my development? And people are impatient, they're coming off of um seventy-three and they're saying, get out of my way, move, move, get out of my way. They're tailgating me, they're upset that I have slowed down to take the right into my development. Now my development is full of little kids these days, I'm so happy. All the homes have little ones playing in the cul-de-sac, playing outside their home, like Mr. Zugabe said, his sons are playing. It's their right to be in their neighborhood and play. And people are coming into my neighborhood, into my cul-de-sac, just randomly, taking a, taking a detour, you know, just seeing, making a mistake maybe and going back out, just like that. And all these kids are outside playing. Please consider that, please do not add one more road there. Disaster. Please, I can see, I I I request you to consider that this is not the right neighborhood for a huge Wawa. Please consider putting there a small business, a local business which we can support, not a huge corporation like like Wawa that is putting up their sites every, in every other corner. There are, you expect kids to bike into this Wawa with this kind of dangerous situations? No, it's a mistake, please consider it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for this witness, the board? Seeing none, I thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else come forward?
Yes, one moment.
Okay.
Anthony Smiglin is joining. Has to unmute, has to start video.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, one moment.
Hi. I testified at the prior meeting and have been sworn in already. I live on.
Mister. Mister Smiglin, okay, you're still under oath. Should we just ask that you don't repeat testimony you already provided on the record?
I won't, the previously I talked mostly about the safety issues. Um so I, there's a few other additional uh issues I would just like to raise or or comments. In no particular order, uh I've heard Mr. Prime mention too many times to count uh quote-unquote our standard sign package or Wawa's standard sign package. Um I personally have driven by dozens and dozens of Wawas locally. Uh there are all different sign packages and signs. Um we haven't heard from any of the traffic experts about the topography of Crescent at that location. And I think that's being ignored, but it's critical to understand. That is a blind hill uh coming from TD Bank down towards Birch Street. The cars uh crest if you're on Birch Street um at that um religious facility. I timed it, when you're on Birch Street and a car is coming down, you have three seconds before that car is on top of you coming out of Birch Street because it's blind. Adding an right-hand turn from there is only gonna make that worse. I'd like to hear how the traffic expert took the topography into account here. Okay, it hasn't been mentioned. I've heard people mention that going from twelve feet to seventeen-foot sign is trivial. That's a forty percent plus increase. The purpose of a sign is for people to look up at it and to notice the gas pricing. Otherwise, you wouldn't put a sign there. As I mentioned, you have three seconds there. Many people have testified, you're looking left, right, forward, there's so many directions cars can be coming. There are kids on bikes, walking. Even when you do that, I've had many close encounters. Now you're proposing a larger sign for people to look up at in the approximate three seconds they have going through that area. I've yet to hear anyone comment on that. I'd I'd like to hear some testimony on that. I would ask the zoning board to consider this not a trivial issue. If Wawa is granted and it's built and they put a larger sign on their facility in their parking lot, it doesn't have an impact that a larger sign on Crescent Road has. Okay? As we all know, or can observe, most of the Wawas around are on corner lots. It's a successful business model. Wawa does not have a corner lot in this location, TD Bank does. We've heard testimony from real estate people at the previous application. Wawa is trying to essentially achieve a corner lot with this driveway. Dumping a major business into a residential area has a major impact and it's, I find it offensive that the two experts planning in traffic both trivialize the impact that has to this area. This neighborhood will be devastated, people's lives will be devastated. Injuries will occur. I don't know how anyone ethically and morally can state that it won't have a quote-unquote substantial impact. Two hundred and thirty people locally in this area signed a petition because they're concerned about the safety. I'd ask the zoning panel, how many times have you had that in front of you? This is a unique situation. You also heard from the experts that this is mostly or or not so much a residential area. Just statistically, that's a lie, or that's a false statement. There are five personal residents between the proposed driveway and Birch Street that have their driveways enter onto Crescent, five. There are more single-family resident just in that little section than businesses. There are a lot of misleading statements we're hearing. But I would ask the zoning board to consider all of this. Okay, safety is the primary issue here. We have yet to hear the impact on the two schools in the neighborhood as well as the ball field. As some of the previous people in the neighborhood have testified, there are certain times where there are hundreds of kids walking or biking around because of what's going on in the fields. Sometimes it seems like there's no one around, but there are many times where there are hundreds of kids. Kids are going to be injured. I have three children, they all play in the neighborhood. This neighborhood has many sporting events throughout the year, it attracts families and kids. And I asked the zoning board to consider this. I don't see any compelling reason why the zoning board needs to dump a major business into a residential area other than for financial gain for Wawa. Wawa has almost a thousand stores and over thirteen billion dollars in revenue. It is not the job of this zoning board to make them more profitable at the expense of our children and families around. And I ask that you seriously consider this. That's all I have to say today, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Does anyone from the board would like to comment? Seeing none, is there, is there another witness that wants to come forward?
Yes, one moment.
Hi.
Yes, we can hear you, uh can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Ria Purvo, I live at ten Birch Street.
Okay, yeah, Ria, you swear a testimony you give tonight is the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Okay.
So um I have been living at ten Birch Street for about fifteen years now. I'm a true Voorheesian, I've been um, I was born here, I've been brought up here. And I've been using Crescent Road and Route seventy-three for um all of my driving life. Um when I turn from seventy-three onto Crescent to access my development, I'm so, so scared at times because there are so many cars there. Um coming from seventy-three south, the two left lanes from seventy-three onto Crescent merge onto one, into one, and there's already so much aggression just in that merge into taking that left onto Crescent Gibbsboro and trying to access the TD Bank. It's a disaster. Um coming from seventy-three north onto Crescent, I have to wait in that yield in front of the yield sign. And I'm looking for traffic from Braddock Mill, from seventy-three, from Gibbsboro, from Crescent, just to take a right onto Crescent to go to my house. And it's scary. I have seen people been hit, I've seen people honk, people have honked at me. And now if you're telling me there's a driveway that's exiting onto Crescent Road from a Wawa, I'm scared to death and it's not fair to the residents of Voorhees. Um and now if this driveway is gonna take a right, only a right, you're basically directing that Wawa traffic onto Crescent, the cul-de-sac, to go back to seventy-three north. That's the only way they can get back to seventy-three north unless they go all the way down seventy-three, they're not gonna do that. You know what I'm saying? And it's not fair when, you know, Dr. Smiglin's kids are are playing there and Mr. Zugabe's kids are playing there and me and my sister are bike riding and there's random people going into my cul-de-sac. One school goes back in person, there's gonna be school buses picking up kids. And in the morning, the the bus stands there and waits right on Birch Street. And there's gonna be random people coming into our cul-de-sac. It's, it's not gonna go well. I mean, even when they drop, even when the school buses drop off the kids, there's, it's gonna be a disaster. And now you're saying there's a gas station where trucks can be there, there's more cars coming through. I mean, this is a horrible idea. You guys need to figure out a way to relocate or I I don't know, this is not the spot. I mean, if you have so many variances to make this place a Wawa, it shouldn't be there. Um yeah, that's, that's what I have to say. I mean, it's, it's, if if zoning board has the residents of Voorhees best interest at heart, then they would know that this is not the right decision. This is not what Voorhees wants, that we don't want this. There's two hundred and thirty people signed a petition. Everyone I've talked to from Voorhees does not want this Wawa here, why are you doing it? Don't, please listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board like to question this this witness? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else out there?
Yes, we have two more attendees with their race hand raised.
Any more?
Just two.
Okay.
I'm gonna admit Colleen Brown. We can see and hear you, yep.
I spoke last time as well.
Mr. Norman, you're muted.
My bad, um Colleen, can you tell us your address, please?
Or Birch Street.
Okay. You've already, you're still under oath, so go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I did speak last time and I, I feel, a lot of my neighbors have spoken about some of the points I'd like to make, but I just feel like I need to advocate for the children in our neighborhood. As my neighbors have stated, we had, we've had two hundred and thirty-one residents sign the petition as of an hour ago. And there's so many people that are against this. Our children and families will be negatively affected. Bikers, joggers, walkers will be negatively affected. Small businesses such as George Zugab has a salon. He will be negatively affected. His business could be negatively affected as, as well as Howard Sobel's small business. I've spoken to many families in our community. All of us find it impossible to get out of School Lane or Birch Street onto Crescent. It's incredibly dangerous. This is only gonna get worse with the Wawa. Crescent Elementary School has over four hundred students and there's about forty students, there's about forty children in our neighborhood. Crescent is adding four more classrooms for the 2022 academic year. They're gonna be busing in children from some of the other elementary schools that are overcrowded. So that's gonna be more children, more families, more buses. There's also the preschool right nearby. Which is, like I said, bringing more buses, more families driving through, more near misses on Crescent. I, I just ask, why would the board want to approve a business that is gonna harm our community? There's no shortage of gas stations. I have not spoken to anybody who's concerned about being able to find a gas station or being able to find their next cup of Wawa coffee, but every neighbor in our community is concerned about the safety of their families, of their children. I beg you to please take this into consideration when you vote tonight. And I ask if any of you drive through this neighborhood on a daily basis, on a daily basis, do any of you drive through that intersection and see how dangerous it is?
Yeah, I've been through it. I'm aware.
Do you drive through every day and see how dangerous it is?
Not every day, but here and there I've been through it and I'm aware of the situation.
Okay, and I, I just again, please, please take our children, like my little daughter here, into consideration because these are the kids that are gonna be affected by it. I thank you for your time again.
Thank you for your testimony. Does anyone like to question this witness? Seeing none, I thank you again for your testimony. We'll have the next witness come forward.
Yep, one moment. We have two. We had an additional raised hand promoting the next one.
Hello, everyone. This is Nikun Shah. I reside at eight Burr Street with my lovely two boys, twelve and fourteen, my wife and my mom.
Nick, before we start, your, your name again, Nick? What's your last name?
Nikun Shah, S-H-A-H.
Okay, Nick. Do you swear a testimony you give tonight is the true self you got?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So I live on eight Burr Street. I'm neighbor of Satya and Lauren Zugeb and have a beautiful family, two boys, a senior mom and wife. I don't know if any of the members here, other than our neighbors, visit Burr Street, but it is like a family. There are so many seniors and so many children who walk, play and play volleyball during the week, like it is like one family. There are a couple of points that I want to highlight from January twenty twenty. We had two robberies on our street, one on Oak Avenue, one on Burr Street, that we still haven't gotten hold of the thief and they were all, all breaking robberies. If we're gonna have all these new cars visiting our cul-de-sac and we already have walkers who walk our street, it makes families even more insecure on having all these random people who may come to come get gas, come to our cul-de-sac, who is gonna watch School Lane, Oak and Burr? I mean, everybody else has spoken about kids playing, including mine. Basketball is a big thing on Burr Street, everybody knows volleyball is a big thing. Family parties is a big thing. Who is gonna watch about all these people? And the two robberies have still not been, and it's, it has been an issue and we are just trying to bring thousands of cars a day because we are the first street on Crescent Road where people can make a U-turn. One very important point which entire Burr Street, School Lane and Oak Avenue would agree, we have a stop sign and there is a big tree. We already have a hard time to make a right or a left turn because that tree is blocking our way on Crescent Road. That is just one tree we are talking about. Imagine having all these cars flooding on Crescent Road. How do we resident make a judgment? And there are eighteen-year-old, seventeen-year-old children in our neighborhood. They will be driving tomorrow. How can they gauge even if we are scared at our age? So I, I would say it was denied once. I don't know why it is in zoning again. It's, I think it is wasting our township's precious time. And I don't know why that Wawa is that important, that everybody is investing so much time when it was already disapproved once. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board want to question this witness? Seeing none, I thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else that wants to come forward?
You have one last hand raised, admitting them now. Naveen Kay.
I'm here.
Okay, Naveen, did you testify at the last hearing?
No, actually, Naveen's my wife's surf phone. She's here. My name is John Zivak. And I was not in the last meeting.
Okay, John, how do you spell your last name? Okay, and your address, please?
Twelve White Drive.
Okay. If you raise your hands for testimony you give tonight is the truth, so if you got?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Norman, excuse me, is that Voorhees? I didn't know, I don't know the address. Is that Voorhees?
Yeah, it's, okay. Okay, we're in the Beagle Club.
Beagle Club? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Same as Ms. Greenwood, okay.
Yeah, so we just recently moved here from Los Angeles in September. And we're familiarizing ourselves with the area and the neighborhoods. We're very glad that we moved here and we have a one-year-old that we're looking forward to sending to Crescent School. And we were really surprised that this was happening because we're familiar with that intersection. I know a lot of people on the call have grown up here and lived here and been here for a long time and they have their experience with that intersection. But I can tell you, as somebody that is not familiar with the area and just coming here for the first time, that is an extremely disorienting intersection. The traffic and, and I'm having come here from Los Angeles, okay? So where traffic is notoriously horrible and I can tell you it is. But that intersection is, is, is very difficult to navigate already. If you have never been in it before, you have cross-patrons, not blocking, you got people coming in all over the place. Like, we avoid that intersection at all, if at all possible. And, you know, aren't really excited about the fact that we're going to have to go that direction starting next year when our, our son starts to go, or when he goes to kindergarten. So we did want to make sure that you people are thinking about, it's not the people that probably who've lived here for a long time that you really need to worry about. It's people who have never been there and are trying to like, oh, I need gas and, and are crossing two, three lanes of traffic, don't understand you've got two lanes making a left. Like, it's, it's already a very, very disorienting intersection as it stands. Like, it feels very unsafe currently. I really can't imagine adding in the gas to the fire of a super Wawa and the traffic that it's gonna generate. Like, I, I, I think it's an unnecessary risk. There's lots of open areas and area. And then, and you know, in this, one of the reasons why we love living here is because you have lots of open spaces. You're, it's not like Los Angeles where every single inch is developed and you don't have any more space. You have plenty of space. You got lots of room. Look around, find another place. I'm telling you, like that, from a newcomer's perspective, that is a lousy intersection and you're gonna make it a lot worse by adding that traffic in there. So just to let, let you know, someone news perspective.
Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
To question this witness? Seeing none, thank you. Is there any other person?
Uh, there are no more raised hands.
Mr. Norman, can we take a ten-minute break? Then Mr. Prime come on?
Yeah, I, I, I think a break would be appropriate after two-plus hours and then where we can pick up is, is Mr. Prime can respond to some of the comments from the neighbors. Um, and then maybe because there's a, some changes to the secondary access, maybe we could go to Ms. Carrie to get some traffic evaluation from her expertise to provide guidance for the board and possibly allow Mr. Prime to respond to that. And then that, that should do it, so.
Okay, well, we still, we still have the one larger speaker that wants to speak, so.
Oh, and okay, and then, yes, we also have an objective. I didn't know if the objector would.
Now in ten minutes, each of his witnesses? Or just ten minutes for the total?
I, well, I think you probably need to give ten minutes to each, each witness.
Depends on how many witnesses.
Well, that, well, we can ask Mr. Sobel and, and decide from there.
Okay.
So.
Alright, so I guess we'll back it. It's nine, seven, so I guess eight seventeen, nine seventeen, excuse me, that area, nine eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You.
Um. Um. Um, Hotterbox.
Who?
The Hotterbox case of the big jumping thing, you'll break.
Um.
Chris, are you back yet?
I am, I am here.
Okay. I just wanna state that we're not gonna go past eleven o'clock, I'm gonna cut it off at eleven o'clock.
That's fair, cuz I gotta drive six hours to New Hampshire tomorrow, I'm perfectly okay with that.
Yeah, I, I have to go for a long ride too myself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get company by this class.
Is all the board back?
All the board members?
Hal here.
I may, I may do a roll call, just to make sure you see her.
Yeah.
You can see every, can you see everybody? I obviously can't.
Yeah, uh, Ha- House here, Bob, Lee. Panoo.
Would you like me to take a roll?
John. Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I, I would take a roll call, but, thanks, though.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mr. Dario? Mister Dario?
He's muted.
You, you're on mute.
I'm here.
Mister Leoncio?
Here.
Mister Willard?
Here.
Mister Whale?
Here.
Mister Cohen?
President Stoller.
Mister Panoo?
Here.
Mister Cooper Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we can begin, we can start, is Mister Prime in?
I'm on Mister Chairman.
Okay.
We, we took some notes, I'm not gonna have each expert testify, I'm gonna try to respond just quickly so we can get on to the, uh, objectors, the, the. The speakers, we had, by my count, twelve, uh, members of the public speak. Um, three of them were from Ten Birch, two of them were from Four Birch, one was from Six Birch, and one was Meep Birch. Uh, the, the, the folks in, uh, in, in this subdivision are adamantly opposed to the application, I respect that. However, we believe that the safety issue is, is, is well, well overblown on this, on this application. A, a little bit of history on the site, the site's been zoned for, um, convenience with fuel for over ten years. Uh, there was a used ference originally for a liquor store on the site, I'm talking about Lot Nine now. And we were before the planning board, I think the zoning board may be aware, we were before the planning board, although the application at that time also involved a. Tractor Supply Retail Store. Uh, one of the big objections at the time was the exit out on Crescent Road. Uh, we shared a driveway with TD Bank, perfectly permitted, did not need to use ferents, it was, it was a conforming plan permitted to use. But the board was concerned that the left-hand turns out, and it's, the driveway being so close to their seventy-three. Uh, and Crescent intersection, and the Gibbsboro Crescent Road intersection, uh, that it was a problem. So, um, the, the, the applicant, at, at a considerable time expense. Moved the driveway from that, that location where it was permitted to this location, which is much further down. Crescent Road, much further from the intersection. And as we testified, this is pass-by traffic, we're not generating a lot of additional traffic on Crescent Road. We've gone back to the county to reduce the speed limit, contrary to one of the public, uh, speakers. That's not an indication that the road's too busy for a while, it's an indication that the county agrees. That the speed limit should be lowered because of the traffic on Crescent Road. Uh, and, and the, not the, not the Wawa, but because of the traffic, the existing traffic. So, we believe, uh, we widened the, uh, the driveway, we've reconfigured the driveway, we added a sidewalk, so we have a bike path and a sidewalk. All the way to Birch. Um, we, we believe the application is a response to, uh, the public's concerns, but also the township's concerns. Uh, on, on the layout of the driveway. Uh, a couple of specific points, um, Ms. Saxton talked about the, the cut-through. Wawa just does not have a lot of problems with cut-through traffic, it's a, the, the, the storing gas. Obviously is busy internally, and, and people don't use it as a cut-through, uh, nobody's gonna use Wawa to get from seventy-three to Crescent Road when they come to the intersection to make a right. So, a- and similarly, the couple of the folks in the Beagle Club, I, I don't, we don't believe this application, and I can have Justin Taylor, the traffic engineer. Uh, confirm this if you want, but we don't believe the, 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 uh, application has any impact on the Beagle Club. Uh, it's further down seventy-three, and it's not in this, it's not in this, uh, market. The Gibbsboro store is under construction, I had Matt Share, our engineer, check, it's about two and a half, three miles away, it's a whole, it's on Haddonfield Road. Which is a, you know, busy road in Gibbsboro, Warkeys, uh, it's, it's a completely different market, it's not, not, and people aren't gonna go there or here because of, because of that. Um, w- with that, Mister Chairman, I mean, I think that's a general overview, I can, I, I try to just take some notes and respond to some specific questions. But we don't believe this is a safety issue, the, the neighbors don't want this site developed. The folks on Birch Street, they've had it open for years, they don't want it developed, a- and, and we certainly understand that. But, the, the, as I indicated, this is a permitted use, thi- this is allowed there, the town revised the zoning over a decade ago to allow this use there. Now, the driveway, again, is in the residential zone, but, but that's because we moved it to there purposely. To avoid some of the traffic issues that have been raised by the, by the folks. Uh, with that, I, I'll, I'll wait if there's any further questions from the board, if they feel I haven't responded to something. But, uh, we, we believe the, the application still is, is a, is a sound application, in fact, and a much, and a much better application at this point, thanks.
Can, can, are you gonna have some of your witness, your, uh, expert witnesses respond?
I can, uh, I, 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 I believe the, my notes were.
Mister Taylor was wanting that they, they took a, they spoke about, and.
There was a. Well, Mister, uh, we addressed Mister Saxton, the, the, Mister Zagib, we, uh, talked about it being a U-turn. The right out from the Wawa down is for, is for people who made a left in from further down and going back the same way. So, we don't know why they would U-turn to go back to the Wawa. Um, the, the, uh, there was a question about the, uh, topography of Crescent Road. And that it's on a hill, I can have Mister Taylor address that if you would like, um.
Yeah.
We took that into account, but, uh, Justin, are you on, are you able to come back and just, did you, did you, you know the topography of Crescent Road? And in, in designing the drive-up, this.
Sure, sure.
The driveway, did you take that into account?
Uh, yes, you know, and I agree with the member of the public that mentioned that there is a vertical curve there. It's located with a crest essentially between our proposed driveway and Birch. That's one of the reasons that the left turn out of here wasn't contemplated. So, for our driveway, people making a right out will need to look left towards Route seventy-three. In order to determine whether there's a gap in traffic for them to be acceptable and to be able to pull out. Because there's no left turn out of our site, they do not need to look right, and the topography, that vertical curve, does not impact. The operation of the driveway. I will also echo that some of his concern may be ameliorated by the county's request to reduce the speed limit. Vehicles are traveling at forty-five miles an hour at this point, because that's the current allowable speed. When it's reduced to thirty-five, if it is, that will allow more time for them to identify the vehicle and be able to turn out of Birch. Because the rate of speed will be lower, uh, through there. So, we did take it into account, and I do not feel that it's, that it's an issue with the safety or operation of the driveway.
And the impact, Mister Horowitz mentioned the impact on the hospital, um, traffic impacts, I guess, on the hospital, be able to get to the emergency room. If you wanna respond to that, Justin?
Sure, absolutely, I mean, again, you know, you've said it a couple times, I believe I said it, and I think it was testified to at the last hearing. On how a Wawa is, uh, really generated most of their traffic by pass-by. We're talking three-quarters of the traffic associated with a Wawa. That's traffic that's already on these roadways. So, the impact of a primary tra- uh, trip through that area, I think during the busiest hours is less than a car a minute. Right, it's a car every minute and a half, every two minutes, so the impact to the adjacent intersections upstream, and, and especially the hospital. Won't really be noticeable at all, so, again, I don't have a concern with that.
Mister Prabhu, Prabhu, excuse me for, if I didn't pronounce that correctly, mentioned again about the safety issue. Justin, you wanna talk about the safety of, of, of the site, um?
So, generally. As, as a traffic engineer, we have several ways we kind of measure safety and the safe operation of a driveway. We look to see whether there's sufficient capacity in the roadways to accommodate the traffic. Um, as set forth within the traffic study and previously testified to, this proposed driveway in Crescent is gonna operate at levels of service B. As in Boyd, B or better, which shows that there is capacity to accommodate the additional traffic. And the other metric we would really look at is whether there's safe site distances for a vehicle waiting to turn out of the driveway. To identify whether it's a safe time to, to exit the site. Um, as I testified to, the new driveway location does meet the criteria that's set forth by ASHTO. The American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials in their design guidelines. Um, and so by meeting that, what we've shown is that the vehicles waiting to leave can accurately. Identify the time to exit and, and exit safely. So, while I appreciate their concern, the, the metrics we look at as, as a transportation engineer show that the driveway can operate safely. Um, I think some of the other safety concerns talks about walking and pedestrians, and I think one of the positive benefits of this project. Is the proposed installation of the sidewalk for a good portion of Crescent Road. Which will allow people to know, need to walk in the bike lane or along the grass or in the street. By providing a sidewalk in conformance with the county standards, we're, we're improving the pedestrian safety, uh, throughout the area.
Mister Prabhu showed a video of a, of a biker, actually, he wasn't on Crescent, he was on Centennial Crossing Crescent. And he ran a red light, I, I don't think, I don't know what that was supposed to show, but do you have any comment on that, Justin? The biker ran a red light, I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I mean, realistically, I think provide, continue to provide the bike lanes through our area and still accommodating the bypass areas the county wanted. Gives the refuge for the bikers through the area, I mean, we can't control people not following the, the traffic standards. But I think we're, we're continuing to provide the bike lanes, uh, as a safety o- option.
Mister Smegon talked about the signs, uh, he objected to my categorization of the standard sign package. Um, I don't know what signs he's talking about, every, and I've represented Wawa for forty years. And the, the sign package is two pylon signs, one of each driveway, the goose logo and the letters above the front door. The canopy signs underneath the canopy, and on the, on the canopy, that's, that's the sign package. Um, he was talking about the size, uh, the variance for the size of the nu- numbers. Uh, the zoning ordinance requires smaller numbers because of the number of prices on the Wawa. Gas pricing sign, the variance is not for the size of the sign, the variance is for the size of those numerals. Uh, you've testified before about the need for the public to see those numbers, cuz it's, it's important for people to know the price of a gas. Uh, or diesel that they're buying, so, you have any comment on the, on the size of the price, uh, given the, given the topography of Crescent Road?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think of, um, the visibility of the sign, and especially the price points. Is critical for people to identify, everybody nowadays shops gas most, most likely by price. And so vehicles need to be able to identify what the price is, uh, given for the Wawa. To then make a decision whether they will be stopping there to get gas or whether they're going somewhere else. So, I think the size of the letters that we are proposing is appropriate for, uh, for Crescent Road.
He, he made the point that it's not a corner lot, um, although your experience, I think, is the same as mine, it's, it wraps, it is a corner lot for purposes of. Wawa's, uh, uses, um, I don't know if you have any comment on that, but yes, it, 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 it wraps the, the TD Bank. And in our, in, in the Wawa parlance, it is a corner lot, is that correct?
Correct, yep, yep.
Um, he, he talked about misleading statements, which we, we don't agree, uh, talking about not profiting at the expense of children. Wawa does not intend to profit at the expense of children, just so that's on the record. Um, he talked about, nobody testified about the impact of the two schools in the ball field, I think Mister, uh, Verderese did testify about that at the last hearing. Because it was one of the questions from the public, but if you have any comment, you, you know about the ball field and.
I do, I do, uh, I'm aware of the, the fields to the west of us along Crescent Road. Um, and I think that goes back to the, the whole pass-by discussion of, of traffic, that the traffic impact associated with this project. That's new to the area, is going to be regu- uh, relatively minimal. You know, as I said, a car every minute to two minutes during the busiest hour, and during most of the day, much, much less than that. You know, as I said, a car every minute to two minutes during the busiest hour and during most of the day, much, much less than that.
Okay. And Colleen Brown said there's no shortage of gas stations in the area. Of course, that's not the test. The test is whether, you know, this site's owned for gas stations with, with convenience stores. So I don't think that's a traffic comment. That's a, that's a legal or an opinion comment, I think, Mr. Norman, that we don't believe that's, we don't have to show that you need another gas station. That's not the test under the cases. Mr. Chairman, I think that's, I've tried to hit my.
I, I have a, I have a couple, Mr. Prime.
Sure.
One is that the, the, the traffic council weren't, didn't discuss anything about a Friday or a summer.
Right.
Is there a comment on that, that the, the study take that into consideration about summer traffic and Friday night traffic?
Sure. And I mean, and that's, that's a great question. In developing the baseline model for this project, we actually looked at several different sources of information. One, because there was a prior application on this site and there's actually been two traffic studies done prior to us evaluating these. There were counts done in, in January of twenty seventeen. There were also counts done in October of twenty nineteen, right? So we had those, both those traffic volumes as a baseline. What we then did when we got involved is we looked at a, a transportation resource known as Streetlight. And it's a, it's a national company that collects traffic volumes based on big data information, right? Coming out of COVID where we are right now, it's really not a, an acceptable time to go out and collect our own data, just because the traffic patterns, when we were getting involved with the job, aren't necessarily typical of what might be out there. So what we did is we looked to the Streetlight information and gathered data across the entire year of twenty nineteen and then annualized the data and compared that to the volumes that were in the previous traffic studies of the project. And so what we did to be conservative is anywhere that essentially we took the highest volume of each one of the, the studies and utilized that within our study to provide a conservative analysis. So I think the analyses that are presented in, in the traffic study really represent an accurate picture, but also a conservative analysis of what the traffic impact might be.
Another question was on the impact on to Birch Street. They're, they're saying that, that it's going to affect them coming out of that Crescent Road exit. Can you comment on that?
So I think that the volume coming out of Birch Street will be similar to what's coming out of Birch Street now. There will be some additional traffic associated with the Wawa. However, all that traffic would be there regardless of whether the driveway was on Crescent Road or not, right? So if the, if the driveway wasn't there, they, these vehicles, say that they lived on Birch, they would be making a right out on Route seventy-three and then a right on the Crescent. So the, the inclusion of the driveway doesn't, or, or not, doesn't change the volume that would be traveling along Crescent and, and entering and exiting Birch Street. We don't feel that the impact of the additional primary traffic at that intersection is going to have really any detrimental impact to the operation of the intersection. And I think the reduction of the speed limit will help help alleviate some, some of those issues.
My last question is, and you may or may not want to answer that, but someone asked that, why didn't you go to the Coles lot? So just, just following to get everybody's answer, the question's answered that, that was presented. So I don't know if you want to answer that at all.
Um, we, we. I, I happen to know that site. I happen to know that site, because actually another client contacted us about possibly getting that site developed. It, it's too, it's too small for a Wawa with gas, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It wouldn't fit.
Okay. Does anyone?
I just want to make sure, I, I just want to make sure for the record, did the testimony for Mr. Taylor is that for the right turn out of the secondary access drive on the Crescent is level service B?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And for, just for the public, because not everyone in the world is a traffic engineer, what's a level service B mean?
So level, levels of service are based on the average delay that you would be waiting to come out of the site and it grades from A to F. It's been developed nationally by the Transportation Research Board and FHWA. And so the average delays, if you give me a second, I can pull up the exact numbers for that driveway. Give me one sec. So on average, during the peak hours that we studied, we studied the morning peak hour, we studied the evening peak hour to pick up peak commuting times, when the adjacent roadway network is typically the busiest. And we also looked at the Saturday midday, when people were leaving their homes to go shopping and, and travel in the middle of the day, which is typically the busiest time on, on a weekend. And so for each one of those, we anticipate delays on, on average, making the right turnout of between eleven and twelve seconds. The, the level of service range for B, for an unsignalized intersection runs between ten and fifteen seconds.
What, what, do you know what, well, I guess you wouldn't know the current, because the, the cut is not there now.
Yeah, with, with a single family home.
You wait the before and after. Yeah.
There, there's no real comparison, but the, the elimination of the left out allows for, for safer maneuvering there. So, so you're not waiting, somebody waiting to make a left on the, on the Crescent.
Thank you.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question for Mr. Prime Neil. Yeah, is there really a need for Wawa to have that Crescent access? Just to reflect the neighborhood concern? Is that a business decision that you, do you have to have an access on Crescent Road? I guess I'm muted, right?
No, no.
I'm having trouble hearing the question. I don't know if it's the mic or.
Okay. Is there really a need for Wawa to have that access on Crescent? Or is that a business decision from Wawa?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. I apologize.
I think what Mr. Leoncio was trying to say is that, is there really a need for Wawa to have that driver coming out onto Crescent?
Oh, yeah.
Do without it?
Ye- ye- yes, it, it, it's necessary. And, and I think as Mr. Phillips, our planner testified, we always have, Wawa always has the two, the two driveways.
What do you mean, two driveways? I, I don't follow that.
Tim, I can just from a.
Go ahead, Justin.
From a purely circulation standpoint, the driveway on Crescent is actually going to improve the operation of the intersection of seventy-three and Crescent as well as the operation of Crescent, Gibbs, Gibbsboro Road not driving the traffic that wants to return to the west through that intersection. The provision of the driveway on Crescent allows us to intercept traffic as they are traveling from the, from the west towards Wawa and route them to and from that driveway.
Why can they, why can they stay on seventy-three?
Well, if the driveway is, if the driveway is eliminated and you want to return to Birch, for instance.
Then I'm talking about eliminating the access on Crescent and just put all your egress in egress on Route seventy-three.
Go ahead, Justin.
If you were to do that and you lived on Birch and you were going to.
Never talk about Birch. I'm talking about your ingress and ingress on seventy-three. Leave Crescent alone.
That's why we need the access on Crescent. He, what he's saying is if you, and go ahead, Joe.
So if, if you live to the west of the project.
Anyplace.
Right? Now, and you want to return there right now, as proposed, you would make a right out of the driveway on Crescent and travel west on Crescent. If we are to eliminate the driveway, you would make a right out on the seventy-three, make a right turn on Crescent and be right back where you were, traveling west along Crescent. So the elimination of that driveway doesn't change the traffic that wants to be on Crescent Road. And it actually improves from a traffic circulation standpoint, improves the operation of the signal, because we're not driving additional traffic through the signal of Route seventy-three in Crescent.
The traffic is always there. There's no elimination. Whatever traffic's on seventy-three will always be there. There's no addition or subtraction. So I, I don't follow it.
It, does the DOT want the secondary access? It's sort of like a, a safety valve or a release valve, because it keeps more traffic from entering close to the intersection and that creates more traffic issues on seventy-three?
Mr. Norman.
About the gist of it?
So they encourage secondary access, absolutely.
They just encourage, so it's not actually needed. So maybe you could have an option of just removing that Crescent access, so that will satisfy the neighbor.
Mr. Leoncio, if you want to go west.
I'm not talking about west. I'm talking eliminating your access on Crescent, because that's what the neighbors want.
And if we didn't, well, ye- ye- yes, but if we didn't have that driveway, you would just increase traffic at the intersection and at Gibbsboro Crescent Road. That was the traffic testimony.
How can it be? No, no, I think the issue is a choice between increasing traffic and risking safety. The neighbors are complaining it's a safety issue with the exit on Crescent. Increasing traffic is not a safety issue.
That's my point, yeah. So maybe take the neighbor, neighbor's concern, so make a compromise.
But you're going to have more traffic, because everybody's going to go out of seventy-three, which is obviously a popular road, especially summertime. And then coming and making a right turn to get back on, on, on the Crescent Road. So you're not, you're not eliminating anything. You're, you're still be the same traffic. In fact, I think you're going to have more volume.
I guess Mr. Leoncio's first question was, is there a governmental mandate that you have a dual egress and access?
No.
Or is that a business decision?
No, DOT encourages it when there's a driveway on.
It's not required, right?
Okay, when, when, when there's a driveway on a state highway, they encourage another driveway if it's available. Not, it's not a state, they, they can't require a driveway on Crescent. It's not their jurisdiction.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman Lee, I have a question I've been meaning to ask for some time. I'll put it out to the professionals on either side. What, if any, use of that piece of property would not require an exit onto Crescent Road? What type of currently approved use of that piece of property?
We don't know. I mean, we don't know of any. It, it, right now, without that driveway on Crescent, it's a right in and right out driveway at seventy-three. It's the sole means of access. There's no way of going back south on seventy-three, excuse me, north on seventy-three. There's no way to get back on Crescent, other than going up to the light, making a right and going down Crescent. It, it's just a practical problem of any retail, any, I mean, you've got to put a house there. Any non-residential use is going to need access to Crescent.
So if we were talking a nursing home or a house of worship or an office building or any other currently approved use of that property, would they require or desire that exit onto Crescent Road?
If you're asking my opinion? Yes.
Or the professionals?
Or, or, or Mr., is Mr. Phillips still on? Paul, you're a planner. I don't know if you can opine on that, but I don't, I think any, any nursing home would want a second means of access for, just for safety. I mean, but I'll, I'll, I'll let Paul answer if he can. I don't know what he can.
Well, I mean, the only thing I'd add is for a matter of convenience, I think most users would desire the second access for obvious reasons. It's convenient from different directions to basically get to the site without having potential patrons or users or employees have to sort of circumnavigate the state highway system to get there. So all else being equal, it's, it's more desirable to have the, the second access point.
Any other questions on the panel?
Yeah, I just want one clarification. So seventy-three, Route seventy-three has both egress and access, correct? So would I go in?
Yeah, right into the Wawa to right in and right out.
Right. So, okay, so they will have that choice. So it was not that the traffic is directed back out to Crescent.
No, our point was if you want to get back to Crescent right now, you, with the driveway we have.
Light and turn.
I'm, I'm sorry?
If you want to, right now, you go to the light and turn.
Right. And, and, and i- if we didn't have the driveway in Crescent, that's what you would have to do. If we have the driveway on Crescent, you don't have to, that you don't have to.
I understand what you're saying now.
Okay. Yeah.
I was under the impression it was just a single entrance on seventy-three and a single exit onto Crescent.
Okay, no, no, it, it, the seventy-three driveway, you can turn into the Wawa and you can go out the Wawa. But if you want to go to Crescent, you'd have to go out of the Wawa, make a right, make a right at the light and go back that Crescent. Unless we have the driveway on Crescent, then you wouldn't have to do that.
Anyone else?
Is the project still doable without the access on Crescent?
Wawa will not do it without the access on Crescent.
Wawa won't do without the access. So that's a business decision then?
Well, they don't believe it's safe, Mr. Luciano. I mean, I, I, they, they don't believe it's, it's safe. They don't believe it's the right way to design a site. They don't believe that it would allow people to get in and out of their site safely. They, they have a lot of experience. As somebody pointed out, they, they, they have a lot of experiences and they know what they need to be able to serve the public in a convenient, safe manner.
There's a lot of business now on seventy-three. They don't have that second that, that's way off. Everything is on seventy-three or some de gas station, whatever business we got there right now.
Well, you have non-residential uses on Crescent Road too. You have TD Bank, you have a law office, you have a church. There's not, that was the point of the planning testimony, that, that, that stretches is non-residential uses, notwithstanding the zoning.
Anyone else?
I have a question about a mile down the road near the golf course. Does anybody know approximately how many homes are building there? Would that be a, a problem? If they put like a hundred homes in there, people coming out at rush hour and starting the day? Or don't, does anybody know that?
Justin, uh, Justin, there's a, there's a Crescent Golf Course further down on Crescent Gibbsboro Road, that little intersection we're talking about. It's, it's down, John, it's, it's a fair, a fair distance away, but I think it's being converted to housing, maybe affordable housing. Would that impact this site traffic if, if you, if you knew that?
I don't believe it would really impact that, given the location and the other opportunities for traffic to come out of there and head to the west and passing our driveway. I don't believe that they would try to utilize the intersection of Crescent Gibbsboro just because of its proximity to the, to Route seventy-three and the interaction and, and the traffic that's there. You know, if I were heading west from that development, I would probably come down to what's this, to Cooper.
Cooper.
That way. So I, I don't think that the, the conversion of this is really going to have any impact on the operation of the driveway.
Thanks.
Is there any plan to put dead end or no through street or whatever signs on Birch or schooling?
We, we, we can't do that. We certainly, I, I think the, it's a township, the township could. We, we, we can't, obviously, because we don't.
Right.
Control.
That may currently exist. Maybe the residents from Birch can address that.
Anyone else? Mr. Norman, do you want to open up, bring Howard Sobel forward?
Yes.
I guess I'll have to open the public, I'll have to open the public section, we'll close the our, our session at this point and open the public session and allow Howard Sobel to come forward with his witnesses.
Yes. I am going to, we have a few members of the public who re-raise their hands. I'm going to lower them for the time being. And then could Mr. Sobel and his witnesses?
I just want to reiterate that we're going to stop at eleven o'clock. So we've got an hour and seven minutes.
I have a Steve Chirpney, Mark Klavinsky, Barbara Woolley Dillon. I don't see a.
Oh.
There is Howard N. Sobel.
That's him.
Yep.
Let them come forward whoever's first. Let them come forward, whoever's first.
Um, Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting for Mr. Sobel, I'm I'm not certain, but I thought Mr. Norman, I thought Mr. Norman said you would have the town, the board engineer answer testify about some of this before Mr. Sobel or my. I I if I'm wrong, fine.
We can either do it, we we can either do it before or after, yeah, I mean, it just may add some add some.
Because I want to. Mr. So bring his own witnesses, so I want want him to hear those witnesses and then make his own comments.
Okay, okay, sure.
We have Mr. Sobel now.
Are we not gonna take the other witnesses? We're gonna put Mr. Sobel in now?
Oh, I thought you wanted Mr. Sobel first, my apologies.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter, it's, he's gonna be.
Let's, let's go with Mr. Sobel because we already opened it up to the public and everyone, so some people want a second bite at the apple, so.
Okay. I'm no problem. Is he coming forward?
Mr. Sobel?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, if if I could.
Wait, wait, Mr. Sobel, first off, just a couple preliminary questions. Are you participating as an attorney or as a wit, as a property owner? And do I need to swear you in? And then who is, who are you bringing with you tonight? Who's gonna testify?
Let me start in the reverse order if I could. Mark Klevinsky is my IT individual, he's here, he needs to be admitted. Okay, he should be on your screen somewhere, correct?
I'm joining him now.
Okay, next, I have Steve Chaperny, C H E P U R N Y, he should be somewhere.
Okay.
And what 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 does Mr. Chaperny do?
He's a landscape architect. Licensed landscape architect. We also have Barbara Woolley.
Is that her last name?
W O O L L E Y, she is a professional planner. And I have Gordon Meth, but unfortunately, he is a traffic engineer. And he could not make it this evening. Because when this thing was originally on, it was on on May sixth. And it got continued to July eighth, and I didn't find out till then. And unfortunately, I was advised, I told him, he could not make it this evening. The other thing that I have a concern about, and Mr. Chairman had, when I asked last time, could I cross-examine witnesses? And he said, absolutely, next time, we were gonna defer to that. Well, there's a little bit of a problem. Mr. Verderese is not here today for me to cross-examine him. I don't know if he can be brought back, but certainly I asked for that opportunity and I was not given that opportunity. And as not only counsel, but an adjacent property owner with an interest in this particular application, I have the right, and you had told me I had the rights, sir. So how do we cure that?
Mr. Sobel, you could test, I mean, Mr. Taylor prepared the report with Mr. Verderese. You can test, you can cross-examine him about anything if you want to.
But he didn't testify last.
I I.
Cross-examine him about the testimony of a witness that I was told I could cross-examine.
I understand.
So I just didn't know how we're gonna.
I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna finish anyway tonight, but anyway.
Yeah, why don't we just get going and get.
Yeah.
Get your witnesses to testify and let's move this along.
Well, can I?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question here, Bob Wheel speaking up.
Sure.
Is is Mr. Sobel testifying as a property owner or is he representing folks? I'm I'm still not clear on.
Okay, let me let me make it perfectly clear, as the former president once said. And that is, I will be representing Voorhees Law Center LLC, and I reserve the right to testify depending on what is presented here. So at this point, I want to reserve that right, but certainly my primary goal is acting as an attorney for Voorhees Law Center LLC.
Yeah, I've I've got no problem if you want to represent folks and then represent yourself as a property owner. But, you know, there's there's this vagueness that all of a sudden you're representing people that are in the area and then you're representing yourself.
No, I don't, I never said I was representing anybody but Voorhees Law Center, I think I want to make that.
Okay, that's fine, okay, very good, thank you very much.
And my only point is if Mr. Sobel wants to represent this entity that I believe he he owned, who owns the property, that's fine, but if he testifies as a objecting property owner, I want I want him under oath.
That's not a problem, I did it last time for the planning board, you may recall.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Sobel, I'm gonna swear you in, just in, I'm gonna swear you in just in case.
Okay.
You you raise your hand, you swear a testimony you give tonight, it's true self you got.
I do, and and the only question I had, just for, I guess, for for order was I was given the right to cross-examine witnesses, do we want to do that first before I bring my people on? Logistically, I I would suggest, but again, I'll defer to the chair.
Well, how many, who you who you want to cross-examine, all the expert witnesses?
Witnesses that are available tonight that testified.
I have no problem with it, but the limit to those time would be ten minutes for each.
Right, and and I mean, part of the consideration is, this is, if if you want to go through the cross-examination, you have your witnesses here tonight. I prefer that they testify tonight. I don't want to see you go through a lengthy cross-examination and then you claim that they can't make the next meeting and you're somehow prejudiced. We don't, we don't want to, you know.
Good point.
Want to run an efficient meeting, so.
I'll do whatever, hey, I'll do whatever, as I said, the chair would like me to do, I gave the option to the.
Okay, then I agree with Mr. Norman, so why don't we have your expert witnesses testify? They're allowed ten minutes each.
Again, let me, let me also say something respectfully. I I think that I did put this on the record last time. But I still have a continuing objection on the jurisdiction. First of all, last time, you may recall, I had a few minutes to say my piece, which was that the plans that were presented both through the Oprah, actually through the through the.
I I I don't want to, I don't want to go through this because we heard your objections previously, it's duly noted. We we carried the meeting, all the materials of the application that are part of the record were are published on the township website. You you haven't been denied any due process, so if we can move along with the application.
Except tonight's plans are different than the June twenty-fourth plans on Concept Day. Number one, that Concept Day today, was dated today, had trees, landscaping, colors, a lot of things that were not included, what was circulated in the portal or to myself. So I do object on that, because I don't even know, I couldn't even see what those things are, what the I'm gonna say the the trees, the buffers and things of that nature. And, you know, what was the impervious on there? What is the, where's the sign gonna be located? Because everything is different on the pork chop. It's not the same plan as was presented on the first night.
No, it's not the same plan, we we, and that's true, and we submitted revised plans, and Mr. Sobel, please. We went out of our way to send you a complete set of plans, we went out of your way, I personally sent you the concept plan in advance. We filed that with the township, it's on, it was on record ten days beforehand. The rendering tonight was prepared tonight, and it was dated tonight. Just that, a rendering of the plan, that's, it's an example of a concept plan of what we're, what will revise the plans to be if the board approves them. So you you know what's on the plan, you had it ten days in advance, and you saw it tonight. If you have questions about it, you can ask questions about it.
I I don't know what's on the plan, because I don't see a side of the plan, I don't see the impervious, the drainage. I don't see a lot of things on the plan that are missing. I can't even, I don't even see a signed plan, by the way, it's not signed, and we know.
Can 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 we go ahead with your witnesses, please?
We can go right ahead, first witness I'd like to call be Steve Chaperny.
Okay.
You hear me?
Yes, Mr. Chaperny, yes, I can hear you.
Great.
Uh, if you raise your right hand, you swear a testimony you give tonight, it's true self you got.
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Chaperny, can you tell the board your credentials, your education and your certifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey, testified before Voorhees Township, Burlington County, Atlantic County, and also Ocean County. Been licensed for fifteen plus years.
I would move to have Mr. Chaperny moved in as an expert as a landscape architect.
Well, just one question, have you ever testified before the anyone Voorhees planning or Voorhees owning board?
Yes, yes, I have.
Okay.
And he was, and you've qualified before, is that correct, Mr. Chaperny?
That is correct.
Okay, we accept your credential.
Mr. Norman, just a point of clarification, he's gonna testify as a landscape architect, he's not a professional engineer, so he's gonna be limited.
Understood, understood.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chaperny, have you had an opportunity to review what has been marked Concept Day and presented tonight with a planned date of July twenty twenty-one?
Uh, yes, I have.
Could you tell us what you discovered with, and by the way, have you also come to come to the properties and area to inspect where the proposed driveway is to be placed?
Uh, yes, I have as well.
And, okay, could you tell the board what you found, what your findings are?
Well, the the color rendering is fantastic, I don't think it really paints the entire picture of what's transpiring here with the the proposed roadway expansion, the sidewalk expansion and the impact it will have on the the Voorhees Law Center. The the curving, the grass strip, the sidewalk is gonna dramatically impact Mr. Sobel's property. The plan does depict a a significant tree on the easement, sixteen inch DBH to be removed, in addition to that, there's in front of Mr. Sobel's property, which we will share some photos. There is a fourteen inch plus ash tree, also a specimen Japanese blood good maple, quite large, twenty-five foot plus, extensive landscaping, Mr. Sobel is obviously is put in tremendous amount of landscaping, well-maintained landscape too as well. Partly because A, it's his business and that's his passion and he wants to present a good appearance to the to the office building, but also to us to create a buffer from Crescent Road. And the the front of the orientation, the solar orientation on the front of his house is, on the front of the office is southern exposure, so the elimination of these trees is just gonna dramatically impact the the entire front of the of Mr. Sobel's law office. The in addition to the landscaping within the courtyard, the entranceway to Mr. Sobel's law office is a fish pond that has been there for fifteen to twenty years that Mr. Sobel is extremely passionate about. The the solar exposure to that is gonna, is gonna put that in in harms way. Moving that that pond is gonna be a dramatic impact. And I I don't really see how that is even remotely possible at this point in time. The encroachment, when I'm looking at the plan, I have the, I printed out the plan that Dynamic has prepared. It appears that the, from the foundation of Mr. Sobel's house, the common walk, the the furthest edge is gonna be approximately about thirteen feet from his foundation corner. Very, very tight, you're looking at four foot, it it, all the landscaping that exists there now is just gonna be completely eliminated. The gray change from the edge of the pavement up to where the front entrance common, front entrance walkway to Mr. Sobel's offices is probably twenty-four to thirty inches, the plan is also derelict and any topo, I understand it's a concept plan at this point in time, so it's very hard to gauge, there's no dimensioning on that plan, you know, where the distance from the property line as it exists today. And I do understand that there's a utility, an easement that the county reserves to expand the roadway. But I don't think it fully takes into consideration the impact that it's gonna have on the property itself. Considering that this Crescent Road, you know, you, one could also consider this is one of the gateways to Voorhees Township, so as you pull on to Crescent Road, the first thing you're gonna, you know, one of the first things you're gonna see is a house that is literally on top of Crescent Road. I think it's just gonna completely change the dynamic in a in a negative connotation to everything regarding Mr. Sobel's property.
How about the buffers? What have you determined, have you looked at the plan as relates to the proposed buffers in the driveway?
They had, they have a meandering walkway coming up the the drive. The it would almost be more beneficial if the walkway is located on the other side. It's a less intense use than on the Sobel side. The evergreens are sporadic, located on the the space that's in between the driveway and also Mr. Sobel's property.
Yeah, Mr. Chaperny, I'd like to put up, if we could, some of the photos to show the property and how it's impacted. Can you identify that?
Yes, this is, this is the entrance sign to the law office. What I did was went out to the property and we measured off of the foundation of the house, took a string line and tried to give the board of of kind of a visual a visual presence of what the road needs gonna do and what it's gonna look like for the, this, not only this property, but the property is going down towards Birch. Next photo, please.
We're gonna mark, we're we're gonna mark this exhibit as exhibit oh one, the entrance sign to Mr. Sobel's law office.
The sign, the sign will have to be relocated, landscaping, that will all have to be relocated. You can see the the pink flags. Again, they carry the the gray changing, see there is a retaining wall there, the retaining wall makes the grade very obvious that the wall itself is probably one of about sixteen to eighteen inches in height, the blood good maple is the top of the wall. The pink flag again denotes this is the edge of the common walk. So even once you put the common walk in, I I think they're still gonna, unless a retaining wall is put in, I don't see how you're gonna not have the requirement to grade on to the law offices of Mr. Sobel. Next photo. This is looking back towards the blood good maple, so again, you can see the the pink flags and the landscaping, well manicured property. That is the, you have some hydrangeas, some flowering hydrangeas there, the ash tree, you can see the the size of that tree. That tree will also have to be removed, and then the tree beyond that is the tree that is marked on the dynamic plan of having to be removed. So you're essentially taking every single tree out in front of Mr. Sobel's property and opening it up to southern exposure at that point in time. So here's a, an image of the, you see, it's quite easy to measure thirteen feet off the foundation of the house and put the pink flags, but that's where the edge of your common walk will be. And then looking down there, so by the time the the improvements for the Wawa, the roadway improvements and the required sightline at distance of three hundred and five feet is done, this house, this law office will be on top of the roadway. Just a different angle looking down the other way, so again, the tree that you see in the background is a tree that's being removed. This, this photo also denotes some of the gray change too as well, you can see how that gray rolls down, so either retaining wall will be necessary, which, you know, the engineers may have already anticipated that or grading back on the Mr. Sobel's property if that's even permitted. Shot from across the street, you can see the size of the trees in relationship to the house, that's a three story, three story house, which the house itself is circa the main part of the house is circa one age, one hundred plus years of age, which there's probably some consideration, I would imagine that they should take a look at some of the foundation, any foundation concerns of this house too as well with that close of an encroachment. That is the entrance, the second, the additional entrance over to the law office to the right. Mr. Sobel is standing adjacent to the the Koi Pond that he has at the entrance way. This is the entrance drive, which is quite narrow, so you're, you're looking at Mr. Sobel is going to have an issue coming in and out of his property. You have it, now you have a D cell lane, which the the county is requiring, Mr. Sobel is trying to get his clientele and his personnel in and out of, out of his parking lot as well, which is a safety concern.
Now, Mr. Chaperny, I think Mr. Prime made a statement that there would be no eminent domain. Did you take a look at the survey on this property and compare the plans to see whether or not it's all in the right way or how much difference there is between the right away and what taking would have to take place?
The survey that I have on file from your property, Mr. Sobel is, the front left corner of the house has a twenty point seven foot setback off from the property line off the left front corner and up the right front corner, there's the main, the the original house is twenty point nine. The proposed improvements, now the, the county has a five point five foot wide easement there. The walkway being at thirteen foot off the front left corner, you know, you could do the math and it's, I don't, there's something isn't, doesn't, is, doesn't appear to be right. It's difficult for me to tell without the dimensions, the dynamic does not, isn't on their server, isn't on the concept plan or also dialing back to the plans that were presented previously, there are no dimensions on that plan either as well, I went back to the plans from the May six meeting as well.
Do you have an, now let me ask you about the Koi Pond.
It's a several, I, it's thirteen minutes I allowed, ten, I'll allow two more minutes.
Okay. Two more questions if I could. Do you have an opinion as it relates to how the proposed changes would impact the Koi Pond and the Koi themselves?
Well, ponds don't like full sun, you know, you have algae blooms and what have you, so eliminating the shade that currently exists is, will definitely be a detrimental impact to that to the pond and the water warms up, there's, there's a whole host of things that will come into play.
And in summary, you, what is your opinion as a landscape architect as it relates to the changes proposed concerning the Voorhees Law Center?
I think it's, I, as a landscape architect, I just, I can't condone it, it's massive impact on the property itself and the building in its entirety is going to feel like it's on top of Crescent Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chaperny.
Your next witness?
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Prime, just for the record, I'm going to reserve my right to cross examine this witness at a future meeting or whenever we have the opportunity. And it's my understanding that the, all the improvements were in the right way, and if that required removal of, if Mr. Sobel planted things in the right way, that, that's a different issue, but we'll have to get to the bottom of that, we're going to have to get some information and make sure we are correct.
Okay, you do, you have the right to cross examine.
Thank you.
Not going to be tonight.
No, I understand, I, I don't want it to, that's fine.
Mr. Sobel?
Yes.
Your next witness?
Yeah, Ms. Willie would be my next witness, yes.
I'm here.
Yeah, hi, hi Barbara, if you raise your right hand, swear testimony you give tonight is true, so hope you got.
I do.
Okay.
Ms. Willie, will you place your credentials on the record and from your education, your certifications?
Yes, I have an undergraduate degree from Rutgers University with a, it's in urban studies with an urban planning option. I also have a master's degree from the University of Pennsylvania. I have eight more courses until I obtain my PhD from the University of Pennsylvania. I have been employed as a planner for quite a few years. I also currently work for the city of Atlantic City as the Director of Planning and Development, I am not here in that capacity. However, I do have my NJPP, which is the New Jersey Professional Planners, as well as AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners Designation. I am current on my membership, my dues, and I have fifty eight or sixty of the minimum thirty two credit hours that are required for this current cycle of educational requirements. I've also prepared a number of master plans, master plan reexamination reports, most recently the new one that's about to be launched for the city of Atlantic City, and I believe that I have testified in front of the Voorhees Board within the last two years.
I would.
I think you were before the zoning board, it was, it was within the last year or so.
Yeah, I would move to have Ms. Willie qualified as a professional planner.
We, we accept our credentials.
Thank you. All right, given that time is very short, I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can with just expediency. We're talking about the burden of approval for a use variance and listening to the application tonight, it's not the, that the residents have a concern with the Wawa, if there was only one entrance or two entrances exits onto Route seventy three. The problem is what's driving the use variance and some other variance relief, it's the second driveway. There's been a characterization that this is not residential in the area, it is, I'm very familiar with this. I commuted this way from down at the shore back to Cherry Hill every day because Crescent Road was the cut through way back when, probably thirty years ago, before it's experienced the volume of traffic that it does now. It is predominantly residential. You do have a law office, you do have two religious uses, the rest of it though, it's all residential, TD Bank is on the corner, so it also has frontage on Route seventy three. Basically, what the applicant has talked about are those purposes of zoning, the positive criteria. There are three things that the applicant has to do to demonstrate the the granting of the variances. They have to talk about those purposes of zoning, they have to talk about that the use variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and it's not going to substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone order, zone plan and zoning ordinance. They also have to reconcile the omission from the zoning ordinance for the proposed use. And third, they have to demonstrate that the site is particularly suited to the proposed use. In other words, the legal requirement that any alleged promotion of the purpose A of the MLU, Municipal Land Use Law, regarding the public good or general welfare must be because the proposed site is particularly well suited to the proposed use. Now, for the purposes of zoning or the positive criteria, they gave three purposes that they believe the application satisfies. I believe that it contradicts eight of those purposes that are stated, and two if you include others. I'm going to go through my, very briefly, I'll list them, they are small letters A, B as in boy, C as in cat, G as in goat, H as in Harry, I as in igloo, J as in Jacob, and then aesthetics and the preservation of neighborhood character. The reason why I'm struggling with this application tonight is zoning boundaries and designations are clear delineations that are to be observed by a community. You do a zone plan, zoning ordinance is to clearly define what you want and where it's appropriate to have a use. Again, to the area, to the rear of the site, it's primarily residential. This is introducing a major commercial development into that more lower intensity area. There's no need to do this, I understand that Wawa's talked about, they won't do the site because they have to have, that's Wawa's business decision. It's not that they couldn't do it, it's not required by NJDOT, they've clearly stated for the record that it is quote unquote encouraged, not required and not mandated. There is also additional land that is potentially available for purchase to the north of the site. What they're proposing to do begins to blur the zoning boundaries or zoning edges at the very edge of the zoning boundary or district for this area. That's critical to remember with this application. I think the resulting development, this major commercial driveway, it's going to go twenty four seven, seven days a week, twenty four hours a day. It's simply too invasive for a cohesive neighborhood. Too much variance relief is being required and requested, they need a use variance for the driveway. They also have this signage package, which they say is their typical package, however, not every Wawa is the same. There are different signage packages for each of the Wawas. This is something that they want because it's part of their business and promotion plan, it does not benefit the public. There's also going to be an increase in the number of vehicle trips associated with the proposed use. No matter how you cut it, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know based on the RSIS standards, it states that for a detached, single family dwelling unit, ten point oh nine vehicle trips, they're going to have far more than that coming out of the driveway, and they've admitted that on the record. There's also an issue with regard to inadequate buffers from residential and other office uses in the area. Again, they're going to have a right of way widening plan, which is going to potentially create additional variance release on Mr. The Voorhees Law Center's property. It's, if you look at the plans, it's an additional foot that's required that wasn't there before. I do not believe that the proposed development is consistent with the pattern of development in the surrounding neighborhood or what was envisioned in the master plan and permitted in the zoning ordinance, and I'll go into it shortly. So the purposes of zoning, again, A is to promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. The board members have hit on it, there's a concern about traffic, there's a concern about safety to the residential neighborhood, the residents, their families living here. B, to secure from flood, fire, panic and other natural and manmade disasters. The driveway speaks volumes. C is to provide adequate light air and open space, again, they don't meet the buffer requirements, they need variance relief from that. G is providing sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. This commercial use is not permitted in the RR or rural residential zone. H to encourage the location and design of transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging location or such facilities that will result in congestion of blight. Again, there are going to be an anticipated number of vehicle trips above what in, what is permitted in this site, a detached, single family dwelling. It's also what exists. Again, I is to promote a visual, a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Again, it's a lower intensity use, it really is overwhelmingly residential. This application doesn't promote that. Aesthetics, preservation of neighborhood character, it all falls in line with this. So number two part of this reconcile, reconciling the omission of the proposed use from the master plan. I've reviewed the master plan and master plan reexamination reports dating back to nineteen ninety eight for the community. They've been done on a regular basis. There was no mention of any change to permit this use in this particular zoning district. Again, it contradicts your mass, the purposes of zoning and the goals of the master plan and master plan reexamination reports that it contradicts under A Commerce and Industry, to allow an appropriate mix of retail and office slash light industrial uses in order to achieve economic vitality in the township of Voorhees. Objective is to provide increased opportunities for office uses in appropriate areas of the township. Second objective is to encourage retail development along certain designated transportation routes. Crescent Road isn't one of them. Housing, one of the objectives is to integrate new development with substantial open space areas and discourage the growth of suburban sprawl. Second objective, to minimize the visual impact of new development and to promote effective visual buffers. Next objective, to encourage infill development. Final one under housing is to promote energy conservation. Under transportation, the goal is to provide for orderly and efficient movement of people and goods throughout the township. First objective is to protect the existing transportation routes from development which exceeds the capacity of the road system. Next objective is to utilize the major transportation routes as much as possible and to avoid the expansion of new major arterial roads. From the two thousand and ten master plan amendment for the MB Zone, what I found very fascinating is they made changes and what it specifically said as part of these amendments were. They were going to eliminate mixed use development. They were going to increase the green areas along Route seventy three. They were also going to have revisions to propose development standards to promote larger parcel development. And this is the key phrase here, as well as mitigate impacts of commercial development on proximate residential uses. They also wanted to have the setbacks from the highway and it's echoed throughout that amendment, it was adopted by the municipality. This development goes or fly, it goes in the face of or flies against it. So finally, the third burden of proof for a use variances, that the applicant must demonstrate that the site is particularly suited to to the proposed use. Again, there are several other uses that are permitted by right, one of which is a detached, single family dwelling, which is what exists on this lot to this day. And again, I think that removing the dwelling, putting a major commercial driveway down that the finger that comes out onto Crescent Road, it's going to blur the boundaries of the zoning district at this point. And I also think that there is no public to benefit to be gained. Only again, the applicant's own convenience and profit by granting the use variance and other variance relief. But again, the site also appears to be particularly unsuited to the proposed use. Now, if we're going to talk about the C two criteria, again, I would argue that the.
You have two minutes left, we passed twelve minutes, you have two more minutes.
I would argue that the applicant fails for the same reasons that I have previously stated. Again, negative impacts of the development, they haven't really talked about them or addressed them. It needs use variance relief, it's the most onerous burden of proof, the use is simply too intensive for the site. There's going to be an increase in the number of vehicle trips over what currently exists on the site or currently would be permitted with or would be allowed with a permitted use. And again, the proposed development does not meet the setbacks for the buffers, they need a lot of signage relief and they need use variance, it's simply too much for the site. It's just an inappropriate location to have the commercial driveway coming out onto a residential side street in a residential neighborhood. My conclusion, the applicant has failed to meet their burden of proof that's necessary for the board to consider granting the requested use variance. There are other alternatives, they simply don't want to use them, it's not a mandate. It's encouraged, but it's not required to have the second access drive. The purposes of zoning, I don't believe that they've met them, I believe that the application actually rises to the level of contradicting more than they've stated for the benefit.
Your time is up, I thank you for your, for your testimony. Mr. Norman, I, I don't know if we want to use our own professionals to discuss the two witnesses, because that would probably be the end, if they don't, he does speak, that probably be the end of the evening and Mr. Prime would have, we'd have to have another, obviously another time to cross examine their witnesses. I would recommend that we let our professional speak at this point, discussing these two witnesses.
That's fine.
And after that, I would, I would adjourn this meeting with pick a date for the next meeting. Who is there representing us? Mr. Norman?
Miss, Miss, or Carrie?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you.
You're all right.
Yep. Mr. Chair, my name is Stacy R. Carey. I'm with Environmental Resolutions, sitting in for Mr. Dorji tonight. That's for how you want. Do you just want me to go through our letter or what? Is there anything specific you'd like me to address or how do you want me to?
Well, they.
What's your standard way of going about?
They both gave heavy testimony, so I don't know where to begin. But is there anything that you want to refute or discuss or agree with at this point? You may not have enough time. You may want to, you may want to have time to think about it and come back to us on another day. It's really up to you at this point.
I, I, I mean, as far as our letter, I mean, I think our letter is pretty clear in terms of like engineering issues. We did have an opportunity to talk to the applicant's design professionals today. And we kind of talked a little bit about that driveway on Crescent Road. We did ask them to take a look at some internal signage and striping to sort of make clear the right turn only use of the Crescent Road driveway. So we asked them to change the pavement markings, which say slow right now to the standard right turn arrow with only. And then we, we talked a little bit about possibly working on some signage at that intersection internally before people sort of enter that driveway so that people know that that's a right turn only driveway and sort of direct them out to Route seventy-three. And then we also asked for some stamped asphalt internally, which would slow traffic down, and that's a pretty standard request and something that Wawa generally does internally to the site. So, you know, recognizing that that's a right turn only. We didn't want people to get caught in that lane and then, you know, wanting to make the left. So we were working to try to direct people out of that lane before they got into it so that we could direct them out onto Route seventy-three. In terms of that driveway and also in terms of the, the, the pass-by traffic, the pass-by traffic for convenience stores as the applicant's traffic engineer stated, the DOT basically puts, it's, I believe it's a seventy-six percent pass-by rate for the weekday peaks. And that's generally standard. That's something that the DOT sets a conservative view on. And basically what that says is that the people who are generally on the road already, either going to and from work or going to and from shopping are the people who are going to use the Wawa. It's a convenience store, so it's for convenience. It's generally not people who are going to go out of their way to utilize the Wawa. They're, they're either, you know, head into work, going to stop in, get gas, grab a cup of coffee, and then get back out onto the roadway. So, you know, if they're on seventy-three and they're traveling down seventy-three, which is what is likely going to be the the majority of the traffic is they're going to stay on seventy-three. If they're coming to and from Crescent Road, they want to get out onto Crescent Road. And I would agree that eliminating that driveway and that right turn only driveway out is going to put a higher burden on, one, the traffic signal right turn lane, and then also the intersection coming through Gibbsboro Road. Because if people are going to want to come back out on the Crescent Road, they have to come, if that driveway is eliminated, they have to come out on seventy-three, make a right at the traffic signal and then come through the Gibbsboro Road intersection. So it doesn't really eliminate traffic on that stretch of roadway. It's basically taking the burden off of the intersection at seventy-three in the right turn lane and then also through the, through the intersection at Gibbsboro Road. So, I mean, that's my opinion in terms of traffic, you know, the traffic study was, you know, done in a professional manner in accordance with standard traffic studies. And as part of their application, they do have to work, you know, diligently with the DOT to obtain their access permits. I will say it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's a positive planning benefit to provide a secondary driveway because it takes the burden off the intersections and it allows people to get to and from the side streets if that's where they're coming from. You know, the Route seventy-three is under the jurisdiction of the DOT. Crescent Road is under the jurisdiction of the county, so they can't really require driveway, they can't really require driveways on those, on a jurisdiction that's not, you know, under their purview. So the DOT couldn't require a driveway on the county road, just as the county couldn't require a driveway on a state highway. So, you know, it is highly recommended. It's not a requirement. So, I mean, that was my sort of thoughts on, on, you know, the traffic. I, I don't disagree with the applicant's traffic engineer. You know, and it basically boils down to as to whether or not the board feels that the applicant met the burden for the, the use variance for the, for the driveway. The Wawa is a permitted use on that property, so the, the use variance generally is basically based on that, the side street driveway.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Prime. We, as far as the engineer's letter, we've already indicated we agree with all the comments other than a minor question about the color of the pavement striping and some of the, some of the drainage comments that can be a condition of any approval of the board grant. So we'll respond in writing. We also want to have the opportunity to update that concept plan to address some of the issues that Mr. Sobel raised about the right-of-way. We need some survey work to establish exactly where that right-of-way line is and the easement line is and, and that sort of thing. So the board has that, Mr. Sobel has it, and then we have it. I understand from the zoning official today, you guys are very busy. The next meeting that you would have, be able to devote a full meeting to us, which I, I'm afraid we need, would be Thursday, September twenty-eighth. So if that's acceptable to you, I'll have to check with our professionals to make sure they're available if Mr. Sobel wants to cross-examine them still. And if his witnesses will be available, then I would ask that we continue the application until September twenty-eighth. I'm sorry, September twenty-third, Thursday, September twenty-fourth, the fourth Thursday. Ask to have it adjourned till then with no further notice required.
Is that date available?
I spoke with Ms. Bradley today and she told me that was the first meeting that you would be able to devote the entire meeting to us.
Okay. So we're, we're postponing this meeting, Mr. Norman, to September twenty-third. I have to have a vote of the board to accept that.
Can I, can I just ask Ms. R. Carey one question because I, I, and then we'll go into the continuance is is that we heard a lot of testimony tonight about the impact that that secondary access drive would have. The residents from Birch Drive were complaining that their concern is with traffic with that second access drive. Does that second access drive create more traffic for the Birch Drive more so than if we just had single access directly on seventy-three? And I heard Ms. R. Carey say that if people were going to go to Crescent Road, they're going to go anyway. They're going to take Crescent. Is there a material difference between having that secondary access drive or not?
I mean theoretically, if you want to, I'm not on mute. Theoretically, if you're, if you want to come and go via Crescent Road, if you live down Crescent Road or if you work down Crescent Road or, you know, if, for example, you know, you're going to, you know, a doctor's appointment down Crescent Road and you stop and get coffee. If, if you want to go out to get on Crescent Road and you can't take that driveway on Crescent Road, then you're going to go out on Route seventy-three, make a right at the light and go down Crescent Road. So if that's your destination, that's, you know, you're going to be on that road anyway. I'm curious, and I mean, I don't want to start a whole secondary conversation, but I'm curious at any point, and you know, I don't know the whole background with the residents on, on Birch Drive, but if the police department has had any, you know, conversations or implemented anything on Birch Drive that if it's worth us discussing with the police department, you know, if there's been any changes made or any improvements made.
They've stated that they actually went to the police department and have not got successful results.
Okay.
I think it would be beneficial for the next hearing to have someone from the police department be present on this meeting to kind of, kind of hear out the residents' concerns and then we can have a direct source from the police itself to talk about the issues that they're addressing.
Yeah, I mean, if they're currently having issues, I mean, it would probably be beneficial to have that conversation to, you know, see if something can be done or if something has already been done. Like I said, I, I haven't been privy to, you know, any previous conversations that might have occurred with the residents and the police department, but.
I'm not sure we're the right venue for that.
It might be worth a conversation with the police department.
The conversation should be having. I'm not sure we're the right venue for that.
Right.
Bobby, the council.
Yeah, and it's really.
I don't want to subject the police officers to.
Obviously. You know, we, we discuss, we have conversations with the police department on, you know, several levels in our dealings with the township, so you know, we could.
But I'm not sure.
See what, you know, what the history has been out there.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Norman?
No.
Want to ask for a motion for continuance? I think we should have a roll call on it.
Yeah, and it would be to September twenty-third, it's, it's seven o'clock. And there would be no further notice to the residents who are attending tonight.
I'll make that, Mr. Chairman, wheel.
I have a second.
Second, Willard.
Okay, can we, can we get a roll call?
Stella.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Leon, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, but I'm out on September twenty-third. I'd be away.
Okay, Mr. DeDario. Mr. DeDario.
Muted, John.
John, you're muted. There we go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yes to the motion and I'll be around September.
Mr. Willard.
Yes to the motion and I hope to be alive on September twenty-third.
Me too.
We all do.
Mr. Wheel.
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Panu.
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Cooper Smith.
Yes to the motion. I'll be there.
Thank you.
If, if. We might have to get Elena to get, if she's available, hopefully she's available. They'll have to read the context of tonight's meeting, which is four hours.
Yeah. Chris, if you can see if we have, when you can, see if we can have seven on the twenty-third.
Well, that's what we're going to try to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. And then those of us still on that testified, I appreciate it, and Mr. Sobel's wall and his witnesses. Thank you. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you. I need a motion. I need a motion.
Wait, wait, wait. Do we need to open this back up to the public for?
Yes, we do.
Unrelated.
Yeah, unrelated stuff, yes.
Yes, I'm opening it back up to the public.
But not about this application.
Any other matter that anyone else in the audience would like to discuss? Thanks, Bob.
No raised hands at this time.
Okay, now we can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Willard.
Second, Panu.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you again, Stella, for all your hard work.
Thanks, Stella. It's nice to see your face. Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, everyone.